Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to tonight's city council meeting. Today is December first, twenty twenty-five. Um, may I have a roll call, City Clerk Price?
Yes, Councilperson Bentley.
Here.
Runz.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Morrissey.
Here.
Al Paladino.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Woolfrum.
Here.
Mayor Sessions.
Here.
All present here.
Well, thank you. Uh, we're moving to the approval of the agenda. I have one correction or two corrections to make. Um, what is in the minutes of, uh, city council minutes of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five? And, uh, it says Mayor Stocker called to order the November seventeenth regular council meeting. It should say Mayor Sessions.
We'll do that.
Thanks. Okay. And then also, um, on new business, uh, council min- meeting dates, um, it actually should say twenty twenty-six, not twenty twenty-five. And then also for January nineteenth, um, we're, we can't have a meeting that day because it's Martin Luther King Day. So that'll actually be Tuesday, January twentieth. So, all right, with those corrections, um, may I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Sound vote.
I have a motion by Councilmember Morrissey, supported by, um, seconded by Councilperson Soha. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Now we will go to the approval of agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Sound vote.
Or amended.
Support.
Yeah, I got it. Motion by Councilperson Morrissey, supported by Councilman Soha. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, and then we will move into public comment on agenda items only. Please state your name and we'll leave the comments in five minutes. I'll show your address. Or three minutes, sorry. Just five, three.
Jeff Nasekis, one twenty-six State Street. Uh, the reason for me to be here today is after last week's meeting, watching that, I tend to watch a lot of the meetings instead of coming out in the cold. Um, I was a little concerned, um, the mayor's directive for council members to only be able to go through him. I truly believe that, um, in our country, we elect officials to do our bidding as citizens. And when I as a citizen have more rights to talk to various heads and also staff, I find it concerning that, uh, my council people aren't allowed to do that. Um, I did a little research and I also found that it's kind of illegal. Um, you're basically violating the, the charter in three different ways. Uh, first of all, the mayor is not a powerful head. He has the same duties as each one of the council people. So I find it difficult to believe that every one of you has to get permission to ask a question of Mr. Mackey or anyone, you know, that may be a head. Um, I this week contacted a head via email by just going on the city website. And, uh, if I was that to be, uh, as a citizen, I can do that, whereas you cannot. I think that's wrong. I think it needs to be corrected and that, uh, a, a citizen should be very upset about this fact that, you know, you're, you're being basically made to figure out that you're not allowed to get to the facts and the information. And what I think that's important to get to the facts is number one, three, I don't know, but for three things. Number one, my favorite pet, pet project, the, uh, beautiful leaf collection system that we paid two hundred thousand dollars, which is under two hundred thousand, it's actually a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars to be exact. Um, as far as I can see, it's been used twice since we purchased it. Um, trying to find out why it's not being used. Maybe it is a pile of junk and shouldn't be used, which is fine. Uh, maybe we should look to sell, do something with it. We then spent thirty-three thousand dollars, which I came up here and was a little upset about. I'm spending another thirty-three thousand dollars for a flail mower for it. Uh, after finding out, doing my little research of doing different ways of possibly making it work, I found out the BPU has a bigger toy. Instead of doing just an inch and a half, inch and a quarter, uh, piece of, uh, material, the BPU actually has one that'll do eight inches. So why do you need a thirty-three thousand dollar toy that will go? And you can use the BPU's at any time. And as far as I know, they're the same, same entity. And number two, when you look at the fact that, um, oh, and I'll make it short. I see the timers and said, I heard you, so I'll make sure I'm short. Um, the airport, you know, we had people come up here and said, we have to spend a hundred and five thousand dollars on airport doors, hangar doors. And then we get a new manager out there and then all of a sudden it's five thousand dollars. So that's three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that the city could have potentially put other places in roads or other good things to do for our citizens. So I'm a little disappointed that now all of you are no longer allowed to ask those hard questions of city staff members without first going through the mayor. Um, out of the two hundred-plus cities, he's the only one that is asking for this. All the rest of them, I, I, I did a nice little search. None of them do that. They're all directed where each of you have equal rights and I'm a little concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Good evening. Jerry Brown, uh, forty-seven hundred Mock Road. I'm a member and director of Hope Harbor. At the beginning of tonight's meeting, we all said the pledge of allegiance to the flag of, um, which, uh, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Most people tonight placed their hands over their heart and said the pledge. If you are Christian, the part under God should have special meaning to you as you are a follower of Jesus Christ and his teachings. In the Bible, Matthew twenty-five, forty, Jesus said, "Truly I tell you, whatever you do for the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you do for me." So you can start, so you can decide to help them, you can decide to ignore them, or you can decide to harm them. So here's a couple of ways that the city could help the homeless people and citizens of Hillsdale. Number one, you can support, uh, number C on the agenda tonight with the fines that were levied against people living in the Hope, Camp Hope. Or the city's laws, as written in two thousand and eight, included forty-one boxes of approved commercial use in Hillsdale. Things like retail stores, bars, adult stores, nursing homes, hotels, and motels. The last three allowed for first floor residential use in commercial zones. Unfortunately, nowhere in the list of forty-one permitted uses does it include transitional sober housing or homeless housing. In two thousand and eight, these commercial needs did not exist. Hillsdale had twenty thousand people in the whole county. Now there's over fifty thousand with over three hundred homeless citizens that stayed in Camp Hope over the last two and a half years. Homelessness is now a nationwide issue and getting worse every year. The root cause of homing homelessness, the number one issue, is expensive housing. High rental rates, high zone li- uh, limits, opioid epidemic, and very limited mental health services, and refusal by many to address these root causes. I have a handbook that, uh, you'll get, and it has a Wikipedia report that, uh, tells you about these, uh, root causes. The reason we have special use permits and zoning variance is because social needs change faster than zoning laws. There's nowhere in Hillsdale that you can now legally have transitional sober housing or homeless shelters because the zoning laws have not been addressed this issue. Hope Harbor is offering the city and county a professional solution to the homeless issue at no cost to you. But we cannot proceed without judicializing. Or I can have somebody else finish it.
Go ahead, just throw it away.
Thank you, sir. But we cannot proceed without you allowing us a variance to the out-of-date zoning laws. Please provide Hope Harbor a legal solution to providing transitional sober housing with a variance similar to the hotels, nursing homes, and motels with residential use on the first floor. Thank the city council for doing the right thing for the least of Hillsdale's citizens. Hope Harbor Board of Directors, thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Grant, Apple Run. A couple of weeks ago, I went to the planning commission. They said the semi-trailers would be moved. They're still there. And no forgiveness. That's a taxpayers' money that they want forgiveness for. Excuse after excuse. Have they paid any of their fines yet? And where do these people go if they get kicked out of the sober house? Are they gonna be on our streets, on our, who knows? Do I have compassion for the homeless? Absolutely. But I also have compassion for my fellow neighbors that are scared to death to want extra locks on their doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Larry Wilson, six zero three, Cole Road. I'm just standing before you. I'm also on the board and the treasurer of Hope Harbor. Um, I stand before you because a little over thirty years ago, I needed a facility like we're trying to start now. And, uh, I was homeless, addicted, hopeless. Didn't have nowhere to turn. My family had turned their back on me and I didn't blame them at all. Since then, we've made our own ends. I've raised four awesome boys in this community. And, uh, I just want to let you know I have a real heart for the homeless and what they're going through. And it's the reason the sober facility is really needed. One of the things, you cannot be around other people that are using. And that's the only other alternative we have in this community. Mr. Paladino, you, uh, came and spent a shift with me about three seasons ago. I share the work and I really appreciate that and with lots of questions and, he kind of asked me, one that stood out was, how do they end up here? A lot of them just fall through cracks. Some of them don't have family, you know, that's having up on them. And these are people that, uh, I really care for. And, uh, the great, uh, accomplishments I'm seeing a lot of these people that come through this organization are doing is just phenomenal. There's, uh, one example, Matthew. I'm also an elder. I like training in church and we're really supporting this mission. But this guy showed up three weeks ago and, uh, I could barely talk to him. He was just hi, he didn't know how to not be hi, but he came to church. And, uh, he, I, within two weeks, it was last week when I seen him again in church, he, uh, not the same man. I just couldn't believe it. Just, uh, those are the rewards you can see by going through a program like this. And I know Camp Hope has got a pass with you, but Hope Harbor, uh, we haven't been established that long. We've really been doing our best to get everything, the legal and the right way for y'all. And, uh, I just ask that you, your grace on us as we try to move forward. And, uh, I just, we, we don't want to be a problem, but we want to be a solution to a problem once again. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our respect, Apple Run. Just want to throw my two cents in about, uh, waiving their fines for the, the fees for the tent coming down. They always want something. We don't want to pay for this. We don't want to do this. We're just gonna keep doing what we've always been doing. And that's the way it's going. The day they took the tent down, they moved it into a building that is not residential, has not been put up to code. It's still going that way. You drive by that whole little area there, there is a bunch of stuff everywhere. If you saw that stuff in somebody in your neighbor's yard, you probably have somebody on them and it gave you a fine and wouldn't be getting waived. Make them be accountable. I don't see a lot of that shit happening. They need to be accountable. They keep saying they're following the rules, they're trying to follow the rules. Clearly, they're not. They're little people living in a house that's not safe. By and watching. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Robert Riker, um, out in City of Thomasville. Uh, discussion, and the gentleman who just left. Um, again, I've been up to Hope and I've gone through there probably eight to ten times now. And I've talked to almost every resident. I haven't found a discouraging, you know, remarks by them. I've been able to talk with them clearly and everyone is pretty busy. There's not a mess. Uh, they might have these barrels, they might have some other things there, but I don't see the messes that has been predominantly the, the issue. As looking in, driving in there, parking around, I've looked everywhere, inside and out of the buildings and where the people are staying. And I don't find the, the crap that people are making the place to look like, you know, a picture of. I guess, to say the least, I hope that everyone here as council, uh, will find, you know, that heart in which Hillsdale has the phenomenon they've always had towards someone who's trying to make it work. And I think you guys know that others that live down that area and you have been there yourselves. And now you want to kind of push along and give them out. But I think they've done a great job and I'm very appreciative to what I've been in the encounter with those that actually run the show there. Everyone, everyone talks to you very decently. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Jack, Plank, fourteen forty-five, South Plumb Road. I'm not a very good judge of debates, but last, um, council meeting, I think the winner of that debate was Mr. Flynn. Um, hopefully that doesn't happen again. I think it was a little embarrassing to the people of the city of Hillsdale. Um, as far as spending money on the roads, I looked at, and I think it was around two hundred thousand dollars that the owner dumped on the city to tear down the spinning wheel in the rec hall. There was no reason for that. The owner should have taken care of that himself. But no, they chose to dump it on the city and the taxpayers of the city, which had two hundred thousand dollars, could have went to the roads. But whoever that was, I guess they don't see that, of course, because it didn't come out of their pocket. Um, as far as appointments go, I wish that, um, that the groups would kind of look at the appointments. Some of the, some of the businesses are like doubling and tripling up on some of the committees. And that doesn't seem like it's fair to the general public or the committees or other people that are in that district or whatever. Uh, I did have a question about, uh, it was said last week by a councilman that they wished there was more residents from the, down to Tifa District on the Tifa Board. My question is, are you talking people that actually own a house and live in it? Or are you talking more apartment dwellers on the Tifa Board? Which is gonna kind of skew the, the taxpayer that actually owns the building and lives in his own house in the Tifa District. And there are many people that live in the Tifa District that own their own houses. Of course, they don't get any support from the Tifa District. They can't ask to have their house painted or shindled or anything like that, like the businesses can, but they should still have some representation. Uh, just a question from that, for that council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Seeing now I will close the podium and I will move into the consent agenda. I have approval of bills on city and BPU claims of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ten cents. Payroll of November twentieth, twenty twenty-five of two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. City council minutes of November seventeen, twenty twenty-five amended. And then finance minutes of November seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Um, may I have a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda?
Sound vote.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman Morrissey and supported by councilman Soha. Um, and roll call vote, City Clerk Price.
Yes, Councilperson Runz.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Paladino.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Stuccio.
Yes.
Woolfrum.
Yes.
Mayor Sessions.
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley.
Yes.
Dennis Nineteen, that's pretty.
Thank you. We're moving to communications petitions. I have a letter from Comcast Letter that was in the back there for everyone to read. After that, I will go into communication petitions. The B Hillsdale County Commissioner update, um, Doug Ingles.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. A couple of items tonight from the county. I attended the road commission meeting, uh, last Thursday. And at their most recent road commission meeting, uh, they have, uh, received their pager collection. Uh, complete results will follow. The pager collection is a road grading system. The twenty twenty-five township paving is complete in the county. Maintenance of coal patching and scraping of red apples continues as long as the weather allows. And right now efforts are made to clear the snow. Road commission has a winter shift change that's been added from ten thirty PM to six thirty AM from now until the first of the, of April. Uh, currently, two people have been added. There will have four for, to fully staff that night shift. They adopted their cost share policy with townships. The percentages are the same as twenty twenty-five. And, uh, they are considering, uh, non-union employee requests to close the wage gap. They have six non-union employees. At the Parks Commission last Wednesday, they heard, had public hearing for the five-year plan. Next, it will be voted on by Parks trustees. And if approved, we'll go to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And then finally, there are one, one hundred full-time and part-time jobs available posted on Michigan Works Southeast. Contact Michigan Works Southeast at twenty-one Care Drive if you'd like information on those one hundred full-time and part-time jobs available. And that completes my report for now. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Councilman Flynn.
Commissioner, I don't remember exactly when, but I saw on Facebook recently that, uh, work was starting on one of the towers for the new radio system.
Yes.
Can you give us a quick update on, on how that's going and when it might be operational?
Yeah, I'm fully operational. Expectation is July of twenty-sixth. And two towers have been completed, I believe, uh, at least erected. They have not been, um, hardwired yet, but they've been, um, built. It's been quite a project. Had, um, substantial submit, uh, cement foundations to, um, in, uh, to build. In Litchfield, they had, uh, a slot to deal with and they had to put, uh, a, a much larger, um, footer in. So it's been quite a project, but they do have two of the towers, um, erected now.
And you said by July?
July of twenty-sixth is what I've been told.
Um, so if it's fully functional at that time, does that mean everybody, uh, that will be using those will have the proper radios and equipment?
Radios have been begun to be, be distributed as I understand it.
Oh, thank you.
Any more question? Oh, uh, Mayor Protopaladino.
Is, uh, the master plan that's set in place, that's finished now?
Yes. The master plan was, uh, um, brought to the Board of Commissioners last Tuesday and was approved.
Okay. Uh, I, I appreciate your vote on that. I was, uh, particularly dismayed about the sections on economic development, uh, in relation to housing and energy. One section called the rural nature of Hillsdale, fragmented and isolated. And it said that in order to attract more residents, we may need more diverse housing. We need subdivisions. I, I probably am, you know, I, I moved here somewhat recently, twelve years ago. Uh, most of my friends did. I will say that almost exclusively, the reason they are here is because Hillsdale is the way that it is. So many of us came from Metro Detroit, you know, the metro area on the West Coast, even metro areas in other states. And the reason is because Hillsdale isn't changing rapidly. The hometowns we come from, and just every time you go back for Thanksgiving, there's another half-mile block of cookie cutter subdivisions. We do not want to be like that. I, I think we need to keep Hillsdale the way it is. It fragmented and isolated, that's the whole tradition of the American West, is that you're independent and free, not fragmented and isolated. You rely on acres. Anyway, I found that very disturbing. I appreciate your vote. I think council or the, the commissioners should reconsider that and just emphasize, we like Hillsdale the way it is. We want people to be able to own five acres. That's a little dream. You move into the city, you think, wow, one day I'll get a nice job. I'm gonna get five acres out in the township. My kids are gonna run free. That's the dream of Hillsdale County. Let's not, uh, let's not needlessly meddle with that through, uh, state-sponsored economic development initiatives. Thank you.
Was there a question there?
I guess just, was there anything else that could be done in the future? I know that it's non-binding.
If there's a question there.
It, it was non-binding. It has no effect, but I, I just see this everywhere. We see a new, a new economic development scheme comes forward and we think, we want to be like Plymouth and Livonia and Novi and Canton. No, we don't want to be like that. We don't need diverse housing. We want a, an urban center and a rural place that people can live, um, independent and free. That's my opinion. If there's anything that can be done to repeal that, I would love to participate or to amend it.
So I don't know about repealing it. That is not likely. One of the main purposes of a countywide master plan is for, uh, the purposes of grant writing. For example, the, um, the grant that the Parks did get through DNR was, uh, from their five-year plan, which was incorporated into the master plan of the county. Remember that even though the master plan was approved at our last meeting, that in fact, we have eighteen townships in four cities. And of those, there are many townships that have their own zoning requirements. Hillsdale Township, which is one of my districts as well, has its own, uh, planning commission. City Hillsdale has its own planning commission and others do. There are also six townships that have no zoning. And so as a result, the master plan at, at the county level is, is superseded by whatever happens in the townships and the cities. So it's your master plan that, that, um, it will impact what, what you do here in the city. And one of the things that you mentioned housing, that's always brought up in almost every meeting I attend, is, is how there is such a need for housing. And one of the things that has happened through the city is the new housing development that happens over by Three Meadows. I mean, these, these have been, um, shown and asked for since I was on council. You know, I remember when we acquired Three Meadows, that, um, we talked and I sat where, um, you know, the council on the other side of the room had different chairs through the years, but that was exactly what happened. You know, and why that was property was brought into the city in the first place as a, for the future of the housing development. So, you know, it, it's, it's a balancing act. Yes, we are independent. Yes, we do want to stay with what we have, but as far as the master plan goes, remember that the city's master plan takes precedence over whatever the county has.
That's right. I just see the county as sort of authoritative in, in educational or in the sense of leadership, uh, possibly. Um, and no, I, I see the same disturbing elements in the city of Hillsdale. And I know it's hard to see because, you know, three houses in the city fall down or burned down a year. But it does seem like we're in a thirty, forty-year trend of the urban core sort of being hollowed out, all the old homes decaying, people buying up the lots next to them, and we just sort of get a sprawl going out rather than rebuilding the urban core that makes Hillsdale so walkable and, and beautiful, all the things that, uh, were encouraging with, with our bike lanes, right?
Councilman Bentley.
Uh, I agree with, thank you also for what the Councilman Paladino said, but I do have a question for you. I'm a little more concerned with the solar and the wind. And did I hear you to say that the townships then can, can veto whatever you guys put out there advertising that we are open for business for solar and wind?
So it's not the county planning commission that is putting out there any message. The county planning commission's, um, purpose of putting together their, their plan, which was from, I think it was two thousand and three, to, to update their master plan, was to give, um, acknowledgement that the townships have their own jurisdiction. And so if there's a solar, if there's a, a, a wind, that- And so if there's a solar, if there's a wind that comes to fruition, it's coming from the township bubble. It's not coming from the county. The county is not trying to propose a sweeping plan for Hillsdale County. That's not what the planning commission, the county plan, master plan is doing. That comes from, and we understand, it's townships and cities, villages that drive that train.
Well, could it turn around then? And then the county is on top, could the county be less?
The jurisdictions have precedence.
So?
Those independent, this county cannot tell the city of Hillsdale how to do their master plan.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Commissioner Ingles? See now, well, thank you, Commissioner Ingles.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, we'll move into introduction, adoptions, ordinance, public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight, so it's on Hillsdale's Energy Waste Reduction, EWR Plan, and I will call my City Manager Mackey.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to kind of give everyone a little bit of information on the particular Hillsdale energies, energy waste reduction plan. So this is something that the state passed as a law back in late 2023, and the BPU staff and other municipalities across the state have been working on this to try to meet the laws put out by the state, working with our associates at Michigan Municipal Electric Association and AMP, helping us with this. So we, working together with the groups at MSCPA, put together a plan. Now, the state's plan, they do offer us a plan to adopt their particular plan, which actually is about three and a half percent of what we spend on our electric power use. So we spend about fourteen million dollars. The state measures its plan based on spending about three and a half percent of that amount to reduce our electric use by about one and a half percent. That's a very expensive plan, and I haven't heard of many partaking in that plan as of yet, maybe one or two. It would be about a half a million dollars, as I put in my memo. So we are working with our other municipalities within the MSCPA agency, particularly Clinton and Marshall, to come up with our own plan. And Coldwater, and that's what you have here is kind of a draft of that plan. Now, that plan calls for about four dollars and seventy-three cents per meter per month to meet the state's particular mandates, which is about two and a half percent. But that's based on us having a flat rate for every meter within the city. What I'm gonna tell you here now is, I think, though we're having the public hearing here tonight, and we'll hear, you know, what folks, including yourself, think of this, I think we need to tweak the number, tweak the numbers between now and the next meeting, because what you'll see in here is, you know, we have a little over six thousand meters within the city with residential, commercial, and industrial. The lion's share of them are residential. And if you, the four dollars and seventy-three cents is basically charging everyone the same amount for all six thousand ninety meters. And doing and looking at this a little bit further and discussing it with the other communities, it's thought that, you know, the bigger customers, the industrial and commercial, should be bearing a higher burden on this. And so what I'm going to work on, and I've started working on already, is actually may having a flat rate for the residential and then on the commercial industrial side, basing it on their kilowatt per hour usage. Because you'll see that two thirds of the nine hundred and ninety businesses in the industrial and commercial in the city, they do, they use two-thirds of the power we buy. So it doesn't make sense that necessarily have a flat rate for everyone. So what I'm seeing in my current review of this is that we can actually reduce on the residential side, four dollars and seventy-three cents, down to maybe two dollars and fifty cents or in that ballpark. But some of our larger commercial and industrial would be paying more because they're using more. So that being said, that is, you know, what I see is us having the public hearing tonight to discuss it, answer questions, and then not taking any action on it till the next meeting, where I can finalize that data and bring that back, and then council can decide. I think council will see the data and decide that that's the better course, I think.
At this time, I'd like to open up the podium for the public hearing. Okay. Did you officially open the public hearing?
I am doing that right now.
Okay.
So I think we're all confused if you gotta redo what's being done tonight for next meeting? Shouldn't we have this meeting next meeting?
Thank you.
Not quite what I came to here tonight, but Felicia, 25 Hillsdale Street, my average BPU bill a month is around two thousand dollars, which is fine, great handy. However, usually a hundred gallons of that per room does not go back to waste. So I'm getting sewer usage I actually don't use. But so as you're looking at that, three dollars, four dollars, five dollars a month, okay, fine. But you increase that a lot. I can't afford that. I mean, my water bill, electric, all that is very high, I think, but thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Fizikis. I like Dave's idea on the percentage, because a lot of us as citizens have very small bills. And if you do, four dollars and fifty cents. Some of my bills are fifteen dollars a month. So that on a percentage basis is astronomical. So looking at that, I think it's fair for what Dave's trying to do is to make it fair for everyone on a percentage basis. That way, the citizens that aren't necessarily using that much electric, forty dollars a month, they're not paying ten percent towards this. They're paying the two and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment for the hearing. Okay, see now, we'll close the podium for the public hearing. And I'll open up to council comments. Council discussion.
Thank you. So to clarify, you're talking about a flat rate for residential and a kilowatt hour adjusted rate for commercial and industrial?
Yes.
It's?
So the way that it's presented here in the packet is a flat rate for everyone, the same.
Right.
Based on a per meter. Looking at the percentage use, like, for example, Myers has a meter, but they use a lot more power than a residential customer. So is it fair that they pay the same as, you know, a single-family home or an apartment?
Yeah, no, that's, it's a great point. I'm wondering, is it too complex of a formula to have residences in at that usage-adjusted rate? Thinking, for example, you know, if you have a two-bedroom home and you don't have it AC, you probably have a lot smaller of a bill than someone with five bedrooms, AC, that sort of thing. Or is that, does that just add too many properties, too many meters into the calculation?
Well, maybe it would be, we, you have to determine a kilowatt per hour amount that you charge. That is something I could explore over the next two weeks for that next meeting as well and explain whether I think that works or it doesn't work. We were primarily looking at a larger commercial and industrial customers. That is something I can look into.
So it's legal to do it either at a flat rate per meter or at a calculated rate? You don't have to take the classifications into account?
You do take the classifications into account based on how much they pay for the different components of the program. So we're already doing that. I'm just, I'm not sure without doing, working on the data some more, whether there will be, what the benefit would be.
Okay, it might be so marginal that a flat rate would. Okay.
But I, but it is something I could look into.
Okay. And for the industrial, commercial, do you have a ballpark estimate right now? Is it gonna change there per month from five to fifty for businesses? I assume for some of the larger industrial places, it would.
So we did look at kind of our largest customer based on the amount, and it would go from probably the five dollars to about fifty, and that's the worst case with our largest customer. So then everyone else would be somewhere in between.
Okay, so the smaller businesses downtown aren't gonna see a twenty X?
Correct. At least they should.
Okay. And then what is the actual, I believe we had this discussion six months ago, maybe, that there was another energy waste reduction type of program. I think it was through AMP. And that was a program where they were actually gonna try to improve the infrastructure to save energy? What is the mechanism for saving energy in this program?
Okay, so the AMP program is actually part of this.
Okay.
We had, did, first initiated the AMP program on our own to be good stewards, and then this particular mandate came into play with the state. So that being said, the money that we generate from the energy reduction fees will help pay for the AMP program, which goes towards the goals, and then we could have extra funds to do other things in order to reach our one and a half percent goal.
Okay, so this is all one package, part of one program?
Yes.
With what we approved earlier?
Correct. So and what we have in the agenda, we include the AMP program, Efficiency Smart in there, and then what they do with the different businesses and residential side as part of the plan.
Okay, and then practically, what type of types of things will the city pursue in order to meet these goals?
We will probably pursue rebates on less efficient appliance replacement and other things that you see with bigger electric utilities, like consumers and DT and others.
Okay, so it's still gonna have to be a property-by-property program ultimately to meet these goals?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'm still having trouble seeing what is the city's money? So then you're gonna give the money back to citizens to make these changes?
Yes. In the rebates and, you know, the incentives that we'll have, right? So this money will be captured by the city on their electric bill, and then we will have a budget and a program that will manage for rebates and like when we give out light bulbs and other things that reduce our consumption.
Right.
We'll have to report on it every year.
Okay, yeah, it seems like the very nature of the thing, though, because it's a tax or a, I guess it's not a tax technically, but a rate charge and then a redistribution to meet these goals based on some sort of financial incentive, it's necessarily gonna target commercial and industrial properties, because those are your biggest rate, your biggest energy users, and there are probably a few big things at those places. You can say, if you make this change, your whole plan saves five percent or whatever it is. Whereas it's much more piecemeal by residences. So what, anyway, what I'm trying to get at is that I would like to see the charges at least, I guess, be distributed back based on the category that they were taken from, if that makes sense? So if a hundred thousand dollars is taken from residences, the residences will get that money back in energy-saving programs? It just seems like the incentive from the city perspective is gonna be to target the largest energy users, very rationally, and ask them to carry the savings?
Yeah, and what, Mayor Proton, what you see in, what's in the packet is that it's broken down by residential and business.
Right.
And business includes industrial and commercial. So in effect, what you're asking for is kind of in play in that budget.
Okay, but as a percentage of how much money is taken or not necessarily?
I would say. Yes.
Roughly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmore?
Just our, with the larger, like the Myers or wherever, they would be paying more for the meter in addition to, they, they're obviously paying more for their usage. But what you're saying is they're gonna be paying more for the, for the meter itself.
So this energy waste reduction plan is based on the meter? So and you can either do it as a flat rate or do it as a percent of their actual use. And what we're, what we're saying is that at least with the commercial and industrial side, it seems to make sense, because we have such a great variety of small pay, to do it based on the kilowatt per hour cost or that percentage versus the flat rate. Because otherwise, the residents are basically subsidizing the bigger businesses.
Councilman Bentley.
Yes, Manager Mackey, when is the state mandate going to affect?
It goes into effect, actually, the first of the year.
First of January. And what are the penalties if we don't do it?
They haven't established penalties for it as of yet.
Nice.
That's a question we've asked, but because of the program, there hasn't been an effect to where they know what, what they're having to penalize for, so.
All right, so dragging our feet wouldn't be the worst thing. I would suggest you're about to make a very, some very political choices, and I wonder if you wouldn't benefit from having, doing it, or you do it, but bring it to a committee and, you know, make a few of us understand exactly the graphs of marginal rates that you're gonna, you know, just so we have a buy-in instead of you just. But so this is the public hearing. We won't have another public hearing, but the vote won't be till when you, where you proceed to vote?
So because we have a public hearing, it doesn't mean you need to vote on what we discussed tonight, so it can be on the next agenda. So I will look at putting it on the next agenda. And the updated numbers will be in there, so the public could come and comment in the public comment period, you know, whether they supported it, the change or not, based on the percentage and what I saw on my work today. I believe, I believe it will benefit the residents, you know. And I will say this, so this is something all the municipalities that have electric utilities are having to do. But there has been some discussion in Lansing about modifying it or repealing it. They haven't, my understanding is nothing has been decided yet. But we were told that our MSCPA meeting last month, there was some discussions on it. So what we put in place this month could change, and it could not. And we could, you know, I don't see it getting any more difficult. I definitely, I don't know if that will happen.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, then I would make a motion at the weak table, action on the energy waste reduction plan until our next meeting, to give the city manager and BPU staff more time to come up with some more solid numbers for us.
Sorry, second. All right, I have a motion by Councilman Flynn, second by Councilman Morrissey, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Come, Mayor Proton.
That's okay, I can talk after if you want to take it.
Okay, all right, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Councilman, or Mayor Proton, say aye.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Does the law, how, how does the law factor in new businesses, new residences? Does it establish a baseline, or can we factor in that there are increased energy needs?
The answer to that is yes. Annually, at the end of each year, we'll have to prepare a report, and that development will have to go into the calculation.
Does it account for environmental factors? For example, if we have a very cold winter, a very hot summer?
It does not.
Seems, seems very, like it can be very fickle. We could just lose it because we have a month of, you know, zero degree days or something?
Yeah, the, it, and it's, it's based on how much revenue we collect, which is kind of, kind of odd.
So you need to reduce the revenue by one point five percent?
Correct, let me correct that. Yeah, the, the state's program is based on the amount of revenue we collect. We have to reduce our kilowatt hour by one and a half percent annually. And as was said by someone in council, so you're, you know, you start with the low hanging fruit, which we've been actively doing. And so you, at some point, the low hanging fruit isn't too low hanging anymore. So it, it costs more to get the bigger, the bigger fruit from higher up the tree.
Yeah, for sure. And then, what did, I think in the packet, what did it say through 2028? How, how long does this law?
Four years.
So four years, right?
It had to go out to twenty-nine, yes.
Okay, so four years of one point five percent reductions? And then the law says no more, or they're saying they might consider more in the future?
We have to, they, we have to plan for four, through twenty-nine, and then hopefully sometime, something will change with the state law.
Okay, I just, you can't just reduce energy consumption perpetually?
No, you can't, that's, that's what makes it very difficult.
It's another one of those situations where I, I would, I almost would like the council to team up with other municipal power companies and say, you know, this, this isn't going to work. We can do one year, we can do two, we can negotiate maybe, but this, we can't, we can't switch to green energy, reduce our energy consumption all at the same time. But, I don't, maybe there's no fighting that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morrissey.
You mentioned industrial and also residential. What's the status of nonprofits in this?
They're, they have a leader just like anyone else, so it's based on their usage.
So they would be under residential, or would they be under industrial? Or do they have a separate?
Commercial.
Commercial, too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Wolfman.
I just have a quick question on, you, the, has a proposed plan is going to have a low-income program? Is, is that?
Yes, as part of the legislation, the state required you to have a residential side, at least twenty-five percent of it has to be earmarked for low-income families.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Just one last thing, I would just like to say that all of what Councilman Palladino brought up is, are things that, that all the municipalities are talking about in regards to this moving forward, so is actively being talked about. And this was for public comment, and, you know, quite simply, they want, they've asked for the public comment and you return to them, so once we finalize what we're doing and get that information, send you back our comments that, that, you know, you all have said might go, go a long ways with our state maps and legislature.
Councilman Solah.
Thank you, Mayor. With what Mr. Mackey just said about public comment, I was shocked that there was only three comments on this, with the understanding that our utility bills are going to be affected by this, by something that's being forced on us by the state, something that's really, and not measurable and not sustainable and idiotic on its face, because we're a utility and the utility is designed to produce electricity for profit. And, you know, so they're asking us to reduce the output of what the utility is trying to accomplish. What happens if we bring in more industry? What if a foundry chooses Hillsdale and they're an elected foundry that wants to consume, you know, mega lots of electricity every year? I mean, it just, it's something on its face, and I, I wonder if we should, you know, as council might just say, you know, at Lansing, we, we just, um, let's see what the penalties might be, and then we can make a decision afterwards. I mean, they don't even know. But if you're not, I, I'm personally offended that we're being threatened with penalties by the state, because they're telling us how we need to run our utility. It's offensive on its face, I don't understand why. What it makes me want to do, if my budget allowed it, is buy the most inefficient things, and I would run them, and I would run them twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. It, it, and I would pay the two thousand dollar utility bill. That, that's what this makes me want to do. So I would just, as we table this, what I wanted to say with that, could we table it as the public hearing is still open? And so we can have public comments, not just at public comment, but again, in two weeks for this session? And that the community might get engaged to see, because I'm sure, based on the potential for our rates to go up, like Alicia said, you know, that there's going to be a lot more opposition once this gets out to the public.
Councilman Battley.
Yes, I think that's right, Councilman Solah. I think they didn't know, it kind of flew under the radar. But now that we've had this discussion and what city manager and you and councilman, or NPT said, I think we can get some more voices in here, because it's, it is outrageous.
Council can, or I mean, public can talk during the first public comment on agenda items, so, I mean, I don't know who really have to go back to a public hearing, but.
Yeah. City Attorney, do you have any?
If you wanted to, there's nothing that would prevent you from reopening the podium for people to speak when you came to that matter in the agenda at the next meeting. That would be up to you as the chair.
So we could still go back to a, a public hearing, that correct? Or open a, open a?
Yes, in effect, you've tabled the issue.
Right.
There is nothing that would prevent you from allowing public comment on any specific thing, at a specific point during the agenda. You certainly could reopen the podium for people to speak to the specific issue when you got to it at the, the next meeting. All right.
Very good, thank you.
Councilman Battley. Sorry, one more thing about it, because it sounded like they were soliciting feedback, and that would count what the attorney just laid out.
Yes, Councilman.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Flynn.
Just a, a quick clarification. I honestly don't see anybody standing up to the podium going, I want to pay more electricity. So, not that I'm saying that public comment would be a waste, but I really honestly don't expect anybody to come up and say, you know, I, I'm all for paying more electricity. My question is, if we have three people, or if we have three hundred people come up to the next meeting and go, you know, we don't want to pay more electricity, being a state law, what can we do as a city council? I mean, we can, we can take three hundred names and send them to Representative Wertz's office, but are we going to see any change just because we said we don't want to do it?
Let's find out.
Councilman Solah.
I, I doubt that any change will happen from it, but they asked, that's new information for me, what Mr. Mackey said, is that the organization for the committee up in Lansing asked to hear the public comment. And our public, I think, has the wherewithal to say, the public doesn't like this. And I'm sure most publics don't like it, but they don't have the wherewithal to say that. And ours does, and I'd like Lansing to hear that.
Okay, any more, council, discussion?
CNN, we will move on to old business proposal twenty-two six special assessment district, SAD twenty-two six dash one Arch Avenue drawings and engineering estimate. I'll call on Mr. Blake to conclude the podium, well, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager Mackey. This item came before council on January sixth, twenty twenty-five, early this year. Due to waiting on approvals through a congressional earmark, engineering and some scope project, scope of project being changed, we have asked to bring forward updated drawings and estimates now. The estimate is at four hundred forty-eight thousand for this project. This project includes full depth, the full-depth HMA milling, storm improvements on the north end, which would be north of Iran. And then on the west end from Iran, that's south will be improved drainage, drainage. So that being said, this does affect sixteen parcels over point three four miles. Any questions? I, I got the city engineer, Rob Styverson, with me as well. Any questions for him?
Any questions from Mr. Blake and the city engineer? Yes, Councilman Flynn.
Jason, could you go over the, the changes again, from the last one to today?
Yeah, so the changes before, the first drawings, there was not approved drainage on the west side of the project from Iran south on the west side of the road. The first project, we were going to crush and shake. After looking at it with Mr. Styverson, we're going to a mill. We believe that the base work, the base materials is fine, can be repurposed. Those were primarily the biggest issues that we had before. Anything to add on there?
I did add one catch basin, there's, there's a gas valve. And the proximity of the original plan was really close to that gas valve. I'd like to have a little bit more separation. So I, I moved the storms who were over five foot, and they had to do the catch basin, which is pretty mind-blowing picture.
And Jason, do these changes, did they make it more expensive, less expensive? And what, do we look at all there?
My, you know, so I, for the unit prices, I look at the historical bid tabs that you guys have, and I also go through them, and looking at the, the unit prices that were being seen, I felt like there was enough contingency built in that we would be able to do this little bit of additional work, which is grading a ditch, which is nominal as far as cost goes, in a, in a catch basin that's five thousand dollars. So big picture wise, I didn't see this changing the construction cost.
Okay, thank you.
It, it, and just so we're always clear, and I'll always say this, you're always going to see three price changes in a project. You're going to have the engineer's opinion of cost. You're going to have the bid price, and then you're going to have the final contract price. And it is exceedingly rare for those three numbers to be the same.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton Palladino.
Thank you, Mayor Sessions, and thank you for your work, good to have you on board. Yeah, it says special assessment four thousand eight hundred seventy. What, is that per parcel? It doesn't seem to be based on the probable cost summary.
Hey, I can't see where you're looking at.
Yeah, yeah. Page forty-five.
Oh, that's the contingency, so that's a percentage off of the price. What is the contingency on that, Rob, fifteen percent?
Ten.
Ten.
But this is the total special assessment cost there?
No, this is contingency of the whole project.
For the whole project, no. So the per parcel cost for the special assessment is not?
That's not included.
Not included, yes.
No, sorry.
Okay, I just saw that, and I thought, wait, is that the total, or is that per parcel? But it's going to come out of the whole?
Correct.
The four forty-eight?
Correct.
So there might need to be an additional five thousand in special assessments?
No, sorry.
For contingency?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. That is the project total, that four forty-eight is project total.
Okay.
The, the special assessments will be, will come after, out of, out of that time.
Okay.
I, I, I think historically, one thing that wasn't done, engineering, construction management, and contingencies weren't necessarily added in, and you were just given a construction cost. So, so this, this is intended to give you a, a complete project cost, not just construction cost.
Okay.
And then Kim did the special assessment role, and obviously the factors vary based on property class, front footages, and whether or not the corner locks. So there's, there's a whole spreadsheet with the equations for the special assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Which, which are capped accordingly as well.
Okay, I guess I'm still not sure what that special assessment line is doing there, but...
Well, what, what that special assessment line is, is Kim's time, my time, Jason's time, anybody who's working for Kim to actually prepare the roles. So it's labor costs incurred by the city.
Okay.
Just like you have engineering costs incurred by the city, my time, Jason's time, Frank Engels' time out doing survey work, engineering.
So a percentage of your time is paid out of the special assessment? And the rest of the special assessment goes toward the project itself?
The, the total project cost.
Okay.
Is, is paid for by, in part by the special assessment.
Right.
In part.
If, if I may, just to clarify, because I think everyone's missing each other here. As I understand it, the line special assessment, because I reviewed this too, and I've noticed that, that's referring to the costs that the city incurs to prepare the actual speci- special assessment roles and make that determination. That's built in as part of the project cost, whereas in the past, perhaps it wasn't. So that's a separate thing that gets incurred by the city, and here it's being captured as part of the project cost.
Okay.
This is totally weird.
Councilman Battley.
Thank you for that explanation, and I, I find it interesting that our special assessments cost that much. So that's, that's good information. What about the pay-for's for all these? The, the feds are kicking in, and I forget how much?
Yeah, this has a congressional earmark of four hundred twenty-five thousand.
Four twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay. Good.
Councilman, or Mayor Proton Palladino.
Thank you, Mayor Sessions. Okay, so the total cost to the city should be twenty-three thousand, give or take?
Give or take. And we'd have definitely waited for the project to come in and confirm that with the rules at the end, with the total project at the end.
Okay, and then it was brought up last time, did we look into the legality of, so even if we just take sixteen times five, although that's not going to, because most of those are industrial or commercial, so it's going to be way more than sixteen times five. But even if we take that, we're talking about eighty thousand, just at the five thousand dollar per parcel. So that's going to well exceed the, the city's remaining share of costs. So do we look into whether this money can be put into a, a special assessment fund for future projects?
Yes, we, we are looking into that, correct.
Okay. I, I would like to be part of those discussions at some point if possible. I mean, I, I understand it for the sake of fairness, right, that this should go into a general fund, but it does seem to be written that it needs to be used to pay for that particular element of the project. And I assume that federal grant money can't be split up between two separate projects so that the grant doesn't cover the full cost of one project?
Correct, it's for the Archon project. That, that, that qualifies for that grant.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Flynn.
Mayor Proton, just a quick clarification, is it legal for us to, to say to Fairway Products or whoever out there that we're going to charge you X amount of dollars for special assessment, but we're going to fix your street, and then you're going to pay this and whatever is left over, you're going to help pay for Berry Street?
That's right.
We, we can do that?
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm curious about. It seems to me that the charter, the ordinance, and the state statute seem to say it needs to be paid for to confer a special benefit immediately with those dollars. The question is, based on our current laws, which is that so many things are just, you know, paid for randomly by the state or federal government, can we maintain the principle that we need this for general road construction, even though we don't need it for this particular project?
I would think the private property or on one. I would think to find the property owner on one, to spend enough money to fix my property and and not against anybody on the other end of town, but you know, you spend your money on your property, I spend my money on my property.
That's right, and then it's gonna be about what? A thousand dollars a parcel or something like that, maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit more, yeah. Yeah, we should have a a solid answer on that, I don't know if there's a, is there a?
I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing something?
Yep, yep, that's what, that's what I'm wondering, yep.
City Attorney Thompson.
The answer to that is basically, no, you can't. You can only assess, because it's a special assessment, and it has to be legally tied to improving the value of a piece of property for which you're being assessed. Right, so if it only costs the city twenty three thousand dollars to get that done, then you get your share of the twenty three thousand dollar cost, whatever it might be, um, to have that done. But you can't be charged something additional to that because it's not providing a, even a theoretical benefit to your property, so that's what a special assessment for is for, is for something that has some sort of benefit to your property.
That's my reading of the law too, if I may, uh, that's my reading too. But have we, have we in the past taken, I I know a much smaller percentage, I believe it was discussed, but have we in the past taken a surplus from special assessments? We haven't done that yet, okay, we just discussed it, okay. Yeah, that's gonna be tricky, uh, can you, I mean, what are the options here? We give them a new sidewalk, there's no sidewalk out there.
There's no sidewalk, no.
So what do you, you either don't use the special assessment, or you find some new way to improve the project, or you charge a very low special assessment.
That's probably a very low special assessment, obviously, Sam.
And Dave, you have?
Um, so, the, this, we have not come across this particular issue as as you know, um, Mayor Protempellado, as we worked on this particular policy, it was split fifty fifty. Um, we haven't experienced this before, so if we only take fifty percent of the project in uh special assess, their their portion, we're we're not gonna be accepting all the grant money that we've been awarded.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're returning some money back, um, which goes against my best judgment. Um, you know, if the federal government's gonna give us some of our money back, we take as much as they'll give us, right? Um, so this is kind of a unique problem that, you know, we've pretty much, you know, identified here as, uh, you know, today, and have been discussing it for the last few days, but kind of been kicking it around and determining how we proceed with it. Because, you know, uh, the policy does say it will be split fifty fifty, and if we stick, we almost have to make a special exception to that particular piece of the policy or amend it um, with this particular grant in order to take the whole grant and not give the money back to the federal government.
Right, yeah, no, I was, I was just outlining the possibilities, of course, let's not artificially raise the cost of the project. Um, do we have any precedent for a a grant funded project in the past that came close to the full amount? I guess Fayette comes to mind, what, and what was done there?
No, that was, uh, so Fayette wasn't especially assessed. Um, I think in East Saint Joe and South, that was specially assessed with a small urban grant in topic.
That was needed.
That was needed, correct, and that was all at the cap.
Right, thank you, so for Fayette, we got the a grant, but we didn't need special assessments, and so we just?
That, I don't believe special assessments was was in place when we did that.
Was it twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, or even earlier?
Yeah, because that was a small urban grant with some other stuff attached to it.
So there's only been two grant projects, the Westwood project and the East Saint Joe that have gotten a grant, but they both come in sufficiently under so that the special assessment policy still took full effect?
Cor- correct, but um, um, Westwood subdivision, that wasn't under a grant.
Oh, okay, I thought that was the neighborhood grant. So we've only had one place where this has actually occurred under the special assessment policy, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Wolfen.
Can we do something, like in terms of not sending the money back, can we do something which would be a a larger thing that we're doing in order to um spend the total amount of money? I don't know, like, put trees in or something?
Yes, or industrial?
Well, we can't, we can't change the scope of the project. Um, probably what our option would be is to amend our policy to take a situation like this into consideration. And um the, the owners of that particular S- uh SAD would would get less. And I just wanna say this, um, you know, unfortunately, most of the grants that are out there are for business related roads, okay? So, and just like um in um, you know, Arch and others, the ones that we're seeing applications for are, you know, promote economic development and business by making the roads better and such. So it's, you know, you might not see this in a residential site, you probably won't see it, but Sam, did you have?
I just, just a couple of things to kind of e- echo Dave's comments and also kind of explain why this is a very specific circumstance. So, so when you think of grants traditionally, this is not a grant like the smaller urban funds, this is a congressional appropriation. So it's federal money that was earmarked for a specific project. So we had to work with our Congressman Tim Wolver to get an appropriation for this. There's a very specific project scope that we had to submit to Congress in order to get the appropriation, and that we have to um maintain the scope of that project with the Department of Housing and Urban Development in order to get the funds for this. Now, with an appropriation like this, at the time when we were applying for this in twenty three, it was projected that the four hundred twenty five thousand would be able to cover the full extent of the project. Obviously, as time goes on and construction costs outpace inflation, the cost of the project has gone up somewhat, which is why this would only cover about eighty percent of it instead of a hundred. Um, most grants, by contrast, you're typically gonna get maybe fifty percent of the project covered, so that's why this is different than anything we would typically encounter. Um, it's a different funding mechanism than anything we've had before. Um, and to answer Dave's question, we're not really gonna be able to change or expand the scope of this because we've already submitted and been approved for very specific um activities, you know, eligible construction activities there. Um, and per policy, so the the special assessment district policy that council approved unanimously this last February, it says that we have to use special assessment districts for all projects. So that includes a project like this where we did get an appropriation, we still have to use an SAD. It also says that the project cost fifty percent must be assessed to those parcels. Um, so that's why there's a split, so if this is four forty eight, you know, two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars is going to be assessed um to those parcels, fifty percent uh will be covered by this appropriation. Um, it goes to the city's fifty percent, again, by that policy that council adopted. So it's just a very different and kind of unique situation, like Dave said. Um, might be worth, you know, taking a look at at how we approach this, but realistically, you're not gonna get a congressional appropriation often or or frequently at all. I mean, it's probably a one in ten year or more uh kind of thing. So we probably don't have another one of these, but we do have the funds, we were approved for it, so um, it is in our best interest to move ahead with it.
Councilman about? Um, so first of all, of course, we're all unanimous, we're gonna take the the federal dollars. Um, but I, and I think the attorney's probably right, and everybody's intuition may be right, that there's no way to play this, but your openness uh gives me some encouragement, and then I guess I would just say, suggest we should probably take this to committee. Again, I'll suggest that, and uh continue it there and come back with. But it's not a lot of money, it's just a question of the special assessments. Oh, I guess what I mostly wanna say is, this again brings up the absurdity of our special assessment policy, because we're leaving, because of this situation that we've been talking about, and so we need to, again, uh, look at special assessments in totality.
Is there any more council discussion? Mayor Protempelladino.
Thank you, Mayor Sessions, yeah, I'd I'd also like to talk about it, the problem is, as Sam said, if you make a a general change here, it's not gonna have a whole lot of application, but the first thing that comes to mind is something like every dollar for a grant that we receive is split equally between the city's portion and the special assessment portion. I don't know how that would come down, maybe it'd need, need to be more like an eighty twenty or something, but um some way to give our citizens the relief that the grant provides to the city, somehow, somehow to split a portion of that with them. Uh, that's the first thing that comes to mind, I'm sure there's probably ten alternatives we can think of if we discuss it at length. Yes, I would, I would like to discuss this more uh at a later date.
Okay, any more council discussion?
Mayor, just purely quickly, um, I, I certainly think that is something we can discuss. I would just note that with most of these uh grants, grants are given out for eligible activities that meet the criteria of the grant. That's in the case of infrastructure grants, going to be your eligible construction activities. They're not gonna give the money to the city to then turn around and give a portion of that to the residents. So in almost every case, you're not gonna be able to take those grant dollars and then divide it up like that, although I I understand the, you know, the the instinct there. Um, but that's probably not a possibility with a lot of these, but again, something we could discuss.
I'm not suggesting we we transfer the money, that would be needless, just the money is fungible, so if, you know, the city's cost is going down by fifty percent, uh, then the city's cost can go down by twenty five percent, and the special assessment cost can go down by twenty five percent. Of course, the full amount is still put on the construction of the project.
It it's not fungible in that way when you accept the um grant requirements.
But the money is not coming out of the city's funds for that project, therefore the city has additional funds that weren't spent on that project.
Yeah, I would just, I I think this is probably a conversation for committee, because we don't wanna get too deep in the weeds, but there's very specific accounting practices that have to be maintained for grants, and how you have to track those dollars to make sure that those dollars from the grant are exactly going to those construction activities, not going somewhere else and other dollars being moved around. So, and that's something that Karen, obviously, as our finance director, can, you know, provide some additional clarification on.
No, that's not what I'm suggesting, the grant would pay for the whole cost of the project.
Ju- just one thing to offer from a legal standpoint to consider it. One of the things that you might be able to look at as a possibility would be to redefine in your policy what the construction costs are upon which you're gonna base the special assessment, the fifty fifty split, right? So you would, in fact, you would, in this case, the construction cost is what the city's actually going to have to spend.
Right.
And then you would do your special assessment based upon that.
Thank you again for, yes, getting on my point, appreciate that.
Councilman about? Yeah, no, I, we should do this in committee, but we can't seem to stop ourselves from talking about it here, so I will say again, um, the grant, you know, to Mr. Fry's point, the the grant isn't for those sixteen individual businesses.
Right.
The grant was for Hillsdale's industrial park, and the city did the work, you guys did all the work. So it sounded like those sixteen businesses won the lotto and the Congress was targeting them. So that's, that would be an argument that we can find a workaround, but we'll see. Councilman Solah, I just have a point of order that we were just here to set a public hearing um for this, for next, um, for the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So I don't know if we'd like to make a motion, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the next regularly scheduled.
All right, I have Councilman Solah setting, or setting, taking a motion to set a public hearing for the next council meeting?
I'll, I'll say that.
All right, Councilman about, all right.
And then the discussion is, do we want to go to committee before that, before then, and do we want it around the fifteenth? Public hearing?
Well, right now, we have, we have a motion on the floor and second to set the public hearing.
So, so if I may, you have two separate agenda items here. The current agenda item is to, is I believe, to approve the drawings and the engineering.
Right.
And your next, I wonder, new business would be to approve a resolution of necessity and set a public hearing, hearing on the special assessment district. You need to approve the estimate first.
Okay, I withdraw my. All right, well, so moved, all right, um, to approve the revised drawing, the estimates, okay, revise the original submission during the January sixth, twenty twenty five council meeting for the following proposed special assessment district. I have a motion by council, first, Councilman Morrissey, supported by Councilman Solah?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, may I have a roll call vote, City Clerk Price?
Yes, Councilperson Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Kaladino?
Yes.
Solah?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
Councilperson Metlin?
Yes.
And Brons?
Yes.
It's an answer.
All right, thank you. Um, now we're going to news, business, a resolution of necessity, public hearing, special assessment district, say twenty twenty six dash one Arch Ave. Mr. Blake? Oh, yes, City Manager Mackey.
So, this is the, where we should have a discussion of the timing and the date of the public hearing. This is a question for the city engineer and Jason, as far as timing, um, it goes with actually putting the project out to bid. When do you see the optimum timing to put the project out? Understand this as the whole, the council can't, to just move forward with the timing.
Usually you'll see your best unit prices come in if you bid January, February, because that's when all the contractors are really gearing up for the next season, and they may not have anything on the plates or kind of grab what they can grab. And then as you get further into the spring, you'll probably see unit prices go up a little bit because contractor may not need that project quite as bad, so they're a little less willing to sharpen their pencil, if you will, and and make it rock bottom pricing. Um, with that said, you know, we gotta look at the end date of the grant too, and make sure we're backed up far enough that we don't push that grant date at all either, and I don't know if I've been told when that date is.
I I don't think the end date of the grant is gonna have a significant effect on that.
Okay. Yeah, as as far as construction goes, this is a relatively small project, so the the construction should move along pretty quick. Um, because there's concrete and because you've got different contractors, you you're gonna see some work and then it's gonna set for a week, and you're gonna see some work and it's gonna set for two weeks. So it it's gonna take uh two, three months calendar wise, but actual workdays is probably less than two weeks. Um, so, but to get your best pricing, which I think is what Mr. Mackey was asking, uh, January, February is really your best months to be bidding. Um, March and April, you should still get okay. If you get into the summer, you might wanna look at it a little closer, depending on the grant date and all that kind of stuff, is the how you work it. Um, you can, you can still bid it out, it's just you might not use that good of a pricing.
I guess my, my question would be to, this is for discussion with council. Um, if we um push the public hearing back so that the council committee can meet and discuss this uh particular issue with, you know, the earth, the uh, this particular grant, um, you know, does that give us more time to, you know, mid-January? Um, would that give the council committee enough time to dive into this and, you know, to make a recommendation back?
Is it for almost what, three, four weeks, what time we get it back?
Yeah, I I prefer a four week ad, and then uh, but it it's all depends on what day we put it out. I, you wouldn't wanna do anything less than two weeks for a, for a bid. Um, and that's, that's really kind of pushing it, but a a four week ad is a nice ad. Um, but really, it it comes down to when council is ready. It, um, there's, there's no other permits that are needed for this, so we don't need to worry about Eagle or anybody else throwing any, any hiccups. It, um there's, there's no other permits that are needed for this, so we don't need to worry about Eagle or anybody else doing any, any hiccups on, on scheduling. So it really comes down to when you guys say we put it off bids, it'd be nice to have four weeks and then it'll have to come back before you to accept that. I'm not sure when the actual final rule gets set because, you know, we're still working off of my cost, not contractor's cost.
So we, so we got either January fifth or the nineteenth, um do either of those, would either of those cause you a problem in getting it out to bid like by the end of January?
No, e- everything should be ready. Bid documents should be in there, we just gotta verify some dates and the plan should be ready to go.
Counselman Flynn.
Well, I was just gonna say, uh in our packet, the advertisement for bids does mention that the city council anticipated award of contract would be January nineteenth, so if we were, if we were to take the rest of the December and find a time in there for the, the committee, the public services committee to meet and then we bring this back up with the public hearing on our January fifth meeting, would that still give you plenty of time? I know that would only be according to news, just a two-week time period, but would that's, that wouldn't put you behind at all? Really, we follow that timeline?
Probably two or three weeks after that, change that date.
And then change the, the anticipated award of the contract to like the first part of February?
Those dates can be changed based on.
But you know, that won't, that won't put you behind or anything?
No, 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 it's, it's somewhat at your guys' discretion, right? And in the end, you know, obviously you don't necessarily have to accept the bids either, right? Not a good practice, not gonna recommend it, but we, we do have, we do have a little bit of time. And what'll happen is, is based on the date you give me, we'll modify the documents to match those dates. We were just talking about how quick can we get everything in and the shortest timeframe, and that's what was provided in the documents.
Mayor Protopbella.
Thank you, Mayor Sessions. Can we just add this either to the seven o'clock session next week, or maybe we can what, the public services come an hour early to come up with some recommendations and then bring that to the seven o'clock meeting, just so we don't have to change anything for uh staff?
I thought he was trying to buy us more time. I don't think we should cram.
I think we feel comfortable going with the nineteen, if we had to.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
We, we can do this in January, we can do the committee meeting in January, is what it sounds like. I don't know why we're spending so much time talking about this. Let's just say the first meeting in January or whatever.
Okay.
I move that we have the public hearing for our street first meeting in January.
Before we support it, uh, Counselor Soha. Do we want, do we want to, is public services willing to meet here in the holidays? I, I have a public services, so. So it's January fifth, I think would give them a better time for it.
Yeah, January fifth is what we proposed already for the next public hearing. We're on the same page.
That, I think that's, maybe I'm misunderstanding, that's what I was saying, let's just do it next week and then we're ready for the public hearing. Right, cause we're already meeting on Monday to talk about roads. That way we could have a committee meeting, bring forward what we discussed. Hopefully have that whole slate of issues solved.
I, I, I'd rather not cram it in, I think, because for one thing, we don't know how long we're in need. I've never seen you let us out less than an hour. So, and the holidays, like, yeah, whatever, we got a month to have a committee meeting. January fifth.
So move to support. Okay, so the motion is that we have a public hearing, January fifth, second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, okay, motion passed, we have a public hearing, or, yeah, a public hearing on January fifth.
Mayor, I have the resolution there too, if we could have a.
Okay.
Oh, the resolution says.
Oh, okay, that's right, sorry. Okay, so can I have a, entertain a motion um to adopt the attached resolution setting January fifth as the public hearing for the condition? Okay, I got a motion by Counselor Soha, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, and
Sport.
And okay, got a motion by Counselman Soha, second by Counselman Flynn, uh mayor will call, city clerk, Price.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Caladino?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Brons?
Yes.
And Flynn?
Yes.
Nine zero, approved, resolution through six five nine.
Okay, who in the business, I am, the twenty twenty-sixth council meeting dates. I just need uh, everybody looks, okay, so January um nineteenth is actually gonna be January twentieth now. Um I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the uh twenty twenty-six council's minutes, council meeting minutes, or dates, sorry.
Uh I had a couple that wanted to throw out there as questionable.
Okay.
And I don't have my list, or I can't find it, but I do remember uh April sixth is Easter Monday. So I would suggest we push that to Tuesday.
Anybody?
Yeah, I, I think that's probably a good practice.
Okay, all right. Everybody else? All right.
And then your, ma- Mr. Mayor, your September schedule would be September ninth, September eighth due to Labor Day, or is that?
Actually, I think September eighth is.
Is, is the Tuesday?
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move April to April seventh, correct, from April sixth. Is that it? January twentieth? January twentieth, right.
Excuse me, I got another one that came to me. Uh our semi-quincentennial is Saturday the fourth. It's gonna be kind of a crazy weekend, hopefully for all Americans, uh so Saturday the fourth, Monday, I don't wanna be the meeting Monday, myself.
I don't see a problem meeting on Monday.
Yes. Uh Counselor Soha. Mayor, uh we've canceled that meeting in the past. Can we just scratch the first one? Are you guys okay with that?
Um.
Probably insane.
No, I, I'd be okay with, how about just moving it, uh because there's three weeks between those two, so there only can go in five weeks, so I don't feel great about that. I'd kinda like uh, oh, I didn't win the election, but I would have liked Sundays to O and G and put thought into all of them. I don't know what this first and third Sunday, uh Monday tradition is, I'm not super fond of it. I don't think we should ever go more than three weeks, and I don't think we always need to go two weeks. And I don't think it's that big a deal to, for three or four guys to like pick out sensible dates, but that's just me.
So where are you at and what are you suggesting to change again?
Uh well, I think going with Counselor Soha, that we skip it or move it to Tuesday or
Which was that?
July the sixth.
So you wanna cancel July sixth?
Uh, I, it, it's kinda premature to cancel it, but if we moved it to
The seventh?
The seventh, seems like a conservative thing to do, and then we could cancel it. Again, we have a five month, a five-week absence, but we can deal with that later.
Okay, so you wanna move it to July seventh, right?
Yes.
Yes, the Counselor Flynn.
I, I have to disagree on that one. I'll, I'll give you at least your Monday, I understand that one. July sixth should be just fine, you know, I mean, if, if you're gonna party all weekend, you know, party responsibly, you know? And then come to the meeting on Monday. I, I just, I, I can't agree with moving July sixth, it just, it just doesn't make any sense. No, I, I appreciate that, so, no, I won't, I won't. I, but um, but as I said, it's usually canceled outright, and so it's for the staff and everybody, it's not, I'm not self-serving here. No, no, I, I understand, and, and from going from June fifteenth to July twentieth without a meeting, I, I agree with you, I think it's too long of a time. I just, I just don't think we need to move it from the sixth to the seventh, I think most of us will be just fine with the sixth.
Counselor Wolfram.
Uh I'd just like to announce that uh the fourth of July is my wedding anniversary. I called you last Independence Day. But I've never forgotten my anniversary on the fire.
Anyone else? Counselor Flynn.
I, I would like to make a motion then, that we approve a revised schedule for the twenty twenty-six council meeting dates, moving the January nineteenth meeting to January twentieth, moving the April sixth meeting to April seventh, moving the September seventh meeting to September eighth, leaving all other dates on the schedule the same.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Counselman Flynn, Counselman Morrissey, um all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? No, the passes, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay. All right, we're going to the Camp Hope demolition, demolition um email, everyone has received that in Motover, I hope, and I will go into Councilwoman. Hey, Councilwoman Hope? Yes.
I do have a statement on that as well, and I have um some more information that we brought up to the, the city on Wednesday, but the packets had gone out early because of the holidays, so I do have some more information for each of you. Um my name is Carrie Stewart, and I'm the board president of the N A K Charity Thrift, also known as Hillsdale Community Thrift. And I'm also the board president, as well as one of the founders of Hope Harbor, formerly known as Camp Hope, and I wanna thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. Um we're here to humbly ask you for forgiveness regarding the costs imposed as a result of the city council's vote to remove Camp Hope's tent and its court fines and costs for the city citation totaling four thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars. Uh we fully understand the need for ordinances and the importance of maintaining public spaces. We also recognize the difficult position that you have been in, balancing the many needs and interests across our city, just as we have been. Uh with the city's camping ban ordinance added in twenty twenty-three on city property, with restrictions on length of time on a bench or resting on the ground, uh we knew that this would create even more difficult times for those uh who are our most vulnerable in our community, and this would leave them with literally nowhere to go. So we, we stepped up and provided a space for them to get the help that they needed, which in turn helped solve problems on the trails and the downtown frustrations at no cost to the city. Um over the last couple of years, we have remained very quiet about the work happening at Camp Hope. This was not out of secrecy, uh but out of respect for the, an understanding that existed between us and the city. We were focused on helping people, providing shelter, food, support, and a path forward for those who have nowhere to go. While the city in turn agreed to look the other way. Everyone understood this as a compassionate, practical solution to a difficult problem while we were all waiting for another organization to open their full-time year-round shelter. Um Camp Hope was only supposed to be a temporary solution until the city or another organization offered a per- a permanent solution. Um I'd also like to point out that Hope Harbor is not a homeless shelter, it's, it's um we require that our clients utilize the services that enable them to get jobs, pay taxes, maintain stable housing within three to six months on average, and this is a huge help to the city of Hillsdale. Now, as a decision was made that looking the other way was no longer an option, there's no use in hiding the good that we've done and that we're still doing. Uh we wanna be fully transparent about our mission and our impact. Since April of twenty twenty-three, Camp Hope has provided over three hundred and twenty individuals with twenty-four-hour shelter, meals, clothing, showers, and peer support for up to twenty individuals at a time. We've helped them to secure jobs, apply for housing, obtain vital documents, and access mental health and medical care through partnerships with Lifeways, Segway, Community Action Agency, Michigan Works, Dochess Two, Hillsdale Hospital, and so many more. We've helped every eligible resident apply for housing, and almost all that have moved into permanent housing are still housed a year or more later. Our job placement rate is a hundred percent for those that are able to work. We provide bikes for transportation, driving them to work or picking them up after their shifts. We help with Medicaid applications and offer supportive environment that believes in accountability with second chances. All of this was possible in our community because of Hillsdale Community Thrift and those who have supported its mission. Helping not just those at Camp Hope, but families across Hillsdale County who re- rely on our thrift store for affordable essentials. We have provided three thousand three hundred and sixty-two families with essential items of need at no cost to them. With a total cost to Hillsdale Community Thrift of a hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, with an average item cost of two dollars and thirteen cents since opening in November of twenty eighteen. Our staff and volunteers work hard to serve our neighbors with dignity and compassion. The fines and costs from this incident, while understandable, would take away critical resources from the very people that we're trying to help. And we're not just helping the people of Camp Hope or Hope Harbor. Hillsdale Community Thrift helps people that have had house fires. They've helped people that have come out of domestic harmony because they were fleeing domestic violence. They've helped kids that are aging out of foster care. Um and yes, we help people that get permanent housing that have formerly been homeless by providing them with things like dishes and pots and pans and silverware and bedding. Uh that is the mission of Hillsdale Community Thrift. And we are not asking for special treatment, as this type of forgiveness has been given to others like the Mobile Home Park that was forgiven over a hundred thousand dollars in fines. Just remind you, we are asking for four thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. We are asking for a chance to keep doing the work that makes Hillsdale a stronger, more caring community for everyone. We are committed to working with the residents of Hillsdale County and the city employees to find solutions and ensure that we are in compliance moving forward. We ask for your understanding and your forgiveness so that we can continue serving our community together. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm here for if you have any questions as well.
Counselor Flynn.
I actually have a question for the city manager. Um could you speak to the um paragraph that she um mentioned regarding Hillsdale Mobile Home Park, city forgiving over a hundred thousand dollars from the Mobile Home Park? Can you, can you speak to that? Is that, did, did the city do that, or is, is it, is it apples and oranges, or?
Uh I would say it's apples and oranges, um that was um a different issue than actually council negotiated with the uh Mobile Home Park. And it was, Tom, you, you were took quite a big part in this discussion. The fees that the Mobile Home Park was assessed was based on the, the specific mobile home.
It was based on statute?
Yes.
Um it wasn't a set of fines and costs that was agreed upon, is that true?
And how, how long ago was that? Cause I honestly don't remember my one year on council ever, is that, so? I'm sorry?
Twenty twenty-three.
Oh, a couple of years ago, okay, thank you. And, and could any of you say more about that? How, how much of a discount did they get?
They forgave all of it.
No, that's not, it was about a hundred and ninety thousand.
I believe we ended up with a 10% settlement, about $19,000. I will say, I don't think this is apples and oranges. One was a fine prescribed by state statute. This is a fine prescribed by
City Council.
the city's ordinances and consultation with the, with the judge.
It's actually, to be clear, it's a consent judgment, which means it was reached by agreement between the city and the defendant that was issued the citation. So they agreed to, if they didn't comply within the time they were given under the judgment, that they would be assessed fines and costs by the court, that they would be required to pay for my time and the code enforcement office's time having to deal with the citation, which was $200 or $250, which I believe is the amount that was in there. Plus, then if they weren't in compliance and the city had to do the work, that they would reimburse the city for the actual costs of demolishing the structure. So that was, the consent judgment is different than something imposed by the court.
Right, but these are both powers arising under state law, right?
Yes, but again, just to, I'm not saying one way or the other, whether it's apples to apples. I just want to make clear that
Yes.
one is an agreement between the parties in effect to settle the case. The other one is something that the statute just says is what you take.
Thank you.
I have a question.
We did ask for an extension, that was denied as well.
Okay, my, I'm sorry, thank you. My question is, you've got, you've got families served that cost items. If you break that down for a person, that's like, well, it comes out to $36.81.
No, not every person is, like, getting the same amount.
No, well, I mean...
The cost per...
But your overall cost per person is $36.81, how do you do that?
It's not per person, it's family.
Okay, so it's even less than per person? So you're saying per family, so if you've got 312 families, you could have 600 people there.
So for example, I, I work for Dojus. I'm a housing keys manager. Some of my kids do not have clothing, and they'll provide clothing for them, and that, that'll be very expensive.
What I'm saying is, you're, you're supporting the families on minimal, minimal money.
Because the items have been donated, is that what you...
Okay, well, I'm just curious where, where it's coming from. Because, I mean, this is amazing. We're congratulating you on your budget, it's very, very well.
So the items at the thrift store are all donated, and then the items that are sold in the store, that money goes towards paying the cost to run the mission so that we can provide these costs to them.
And that's not included in here?
No.
So that's a donation? In a sense, from the thrift store?
Of course, the, the items that are given to the people that need them, those are completely a donation. We don't charge anything for those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Uh, so the, the, what is it, $689, I believe. I don't see it, but, $689 for, that's for Jason and his crew and the cops? Is that right? And the rest is for, like, the attorney and...
It wasn't clear in, in the bill. It wasn't itemized very well. And then there was an additional bill after, so we're not sure what it was.
So to answer your question, the total bill is $2834 plus $689?
And that $2834 is mostly the attorney and the court costs? Oh, it's Jason?
Yes, right.
Could you... That's all your costs? Why, why isn't it itemized better?
So these costs went to... So the $2834 is DPS labor, the $689 was out of the city assessor and for the police department to be there, so that is 100% labor cost.
And this was agreed between the parties when?
There is a judgment that was entered by the court. It's called a consent judgment. That's when the parties agree to the terms of the judgment. And then the judge enters that as an order or a judgment of the court. That judgment provided that if they didn't comply within a specific period of time, that the judge would assess under the city's ordinance and under state law various costs and fines. Okay, the fines come from the city's ordinance. The costs are pursuant to state statute to cover the court and that sort of thing. And there was also provision that was agreed upon that they would reimburse the city $250 for the costs that the city directly incurred in bringing the citation to prosecution. Those are in addition to the costs to tear down the structure. So those are provided for separately in the judgment. So the judgment would have been... The judgment gets submitted to the court. Once it's signed by the parties, the judge signs it. If the party does not comply with the judgment within, if they comply within the time that they're supposed to, there are no fines and costs, they aren't to pay any, okay? Because we're looking for compliance. If they don't, we file an affidavit with the court to that fine. And the court will then issue a separate order that says what fines and costs they have to pay. That's an obligation to the court. There's nothing that we can necessarily do with that. The $250 reimbursement to the court is something that if you wanted to, we could not seek, we could decide not to seek to collect. The same thing goes for the costs for tearing down the structure. So you could decide that you didn't want to pursue those requirements to pay those.
So I, I was there that day, that Missy had signed that court order or the agreement, and we had talked with you that day and said that the same thing was going to happen regardless of she signed it or not, but we would have additional court fines if we went before the judge, and that by signing that, we would have additional time and that we could request an extension. And so we went that route and requested an extension. And then Kim said that it wasn't in writing, and so we were not granted that. But she understood that we needed to do it in writing.
And Jason, this $2834 is all that day? Was there a loss for that actual day?
Yes, there was, so that was one day, all eight people of DPS staff, you know, they were with our vehicles, yes, for the four-hour duration, we were there.
We're just trying to help people.
Well, and I, oh, sorry.
Just, Tom, just, just to be clear then, so I, I understand, um... The $2834, $2,834 that the city ordered demo costs, are those part of the summary judgment then?
It's not a summary judgment, it's a consent.
Or a consented judgment, I'm sorry.
Consent, there's two different...
No, no, I, I, I spoke wrong, I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay. So the, it is part of the judgment that the city gets to recover its costs.
Right.
And they get assessed to the property as a special assessment. So they go on and assess the property.
So this just isn't a city bill, this is a judge-approved?
This is part of the judgment issued by the court, but it is not a fine, it is not statutory costs. It is something we agreed to. So like, if you and I have litigation and we entered into a settlement agreement, we may choose not to make that public and just say, we're going to dismiss the case and abide by the terms of the settlement. Or we may have the settlement be part of the judgment that gets issued by the court, that can then be enforced by the court. That's what this is. This is agreement to resolve it. And the difference is that in these consent judgments, we give a little bit of time for you to get into compliance and not have to pay anything. Whereas if you were to go in and have your hearing on that day and you were to lose, the court would not give you time to comply. The court would just say, here are your fines, here are your costs, and you have to, to bring the property into compliance with the ordinance by such and such a date. And if you don't, the city can come in and do that work and assess it against the property.
And does this, does this $2834 then, or the $689, either one, does that also include the, I'm seeing here, the civil infraction judgments, balance due $170 that are, then responded to pay $250 directly to the city of Hillsdale?
No.
Is that, so that, that $250 is actually separate from all of this?
Yes.
And that is still owed?
We could decide not to collect that, not to pursue collection of that if we wanted to.
Okay.
And if you decided to do that, I would submit a motion to the court to amend the judgment to eliminate those items.
Okay, thank you.
Council, Council discussed, Councilman Bailey.
So I'm not hearing a lot of council participation. So I don't know how this vote is going to go. I've not even decided how I'll vote. But I would like to recognize the, the new repentant attitude of the board. And I'm, I'm glad you're, you're all still engaged. But, and, and it has been tense between the city and Camp Hope, Hope Harbor. And I'm afraid, so I, I would be inclined to mercy except that the, the issue is going to continue. And I, I don't know, the issue, I think mostly, is the location. The Apple Run residents have been tearing their hair out forever. And I'm inclined to be sympathetic with them. But I, I'm not trying to, like, crush you out of business. But I don't know, I, I don't, I wish some of my councilmen would show their hand a little bit. I would, like I said, I'm inclined to mercy, but the issue isn't going to go away, so...
So, I'm... The homeless issue isn't going away, except what we're, the, the work that we're doing to make the homeless issue go away. It's, it's not a homeless shelter, like I said. We are helping them to get jobs and to be permanently housed, going to AA or getting mental health, getting all of those services right there. We're, we're helping to solve the homeless problem, not adding to it. And I think anywhere that we go, it's, it's going to be a problem with whatever residents are around us. It's not, not in my backyard is, you know, is, is what it is. And I, I'll be completely honest with you. We are in contact with the American Disability Association and with the Michigan Coalition Against Homelessness, and their attorneys are very, very interested and, and working alongside us on this. And, and there is precedence in the state of Michigan, and we don't want to go that way, we just want to help people. We just want to help people to not be on drugs and to get jobs and the mental health that they need and to be permanently housed. That, that's all we want. We, we don't, we don't want to be contentious, we don't want to fight with people. We want to be good neighbors.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate all that, but, I mean, from the other side, the, the city council, the city staff, the city at large, and the community and the neighbors, they see this as an act, because the city council already voted the way they did. You went to planning commission, that was unanimous against you. I, we presume you're going to go to the zoning board, and I would predict that will fall on deaf ears also. So the, the problem will remain, and is Hope Harbor itself in that location. And so this, this issue of...
We are looking at other locations as well. And there, we've got possible people wanting to help fund that. And there are going to be neighbors in that area that are not happy, and there are a lot more people around that area. What solutions do you have? Do you have a suggestion?
Okay, I'm going to take you back to council, okay? All right, thank you, Council Manager Mackey.
So I just want to walk council through, um... this process since they were built. So they were built on 10/24, the $2834, for taking down the building with, yes, it's time. And then they received a second bill for the $689 for the assessing department and, and police department and those who, other individuals who were involved at that time because they, we had to have police there. As many of you have seen the videos, it was an unpleasant process taking down the tent. And we were told that they were going to take the tent down as they signed the agreement, and never did. Then on 11/19, the planning commission met with Hope Harbor for plans to change the use and occupancy of the structure located on the property to residential use. That plan was denied, and they were, they discussed it during that entire process. And the email was sent by Hope Harbor asking for the fines and penalties to be waived for the city order, for the city ordered removal for the $2,800. I denied that because council made it very clear we, you, you wanted that down, and that was a cost according to the court judgment, and that's why it's on here today, is because I denied it and their option is to come to the, the board. But probably the most important thing is I want to mention that, you know, visual, visual inspection of the property determining that there are still people living there in the structure after the planning commission met denying the change in use. And quite simply, the size of their structure that they're using does not meet our codes. They have more people in there than our codes allow per square foot. And then they had no use in occupancy for that building. And then we did issue a municipal civil infraction on 11/24 to them for that. And our intent is to continue that process because they're still out of compliance. And, you know, the, the council and staff, everyone agrees that that what they're doing is good, but where they're doing it is not allowed. So, and, and you, they need to find another location on which to do it. And there are options, but they're wanting to do it there, and everything goes against doing it in that particular location, so that's what I'm saying.
The occupancy laws are 50 square feet per person, and there's 904 square feet, which allows for 16 people, 16 units.
That's not true.
It's for sober living.
They keep changing the...
For sober living, that is, that is it.
No, it was open until the town.
Councilman Sol.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mackey. Back on your way, the city manager just said, we've always applauded the efforts there. The challenge is what was just kind of the banter back and forth just here at the end of that is that we there's promises made and timelines saying, like, just in the spring, oh, it'll be done in four months. And four months went by, and we were asking for another extension. And, you know, um... Just to remind council, when this started as a philanthropic effort, which I applaud, because of the no camping ordinance to keep our trails safe so that families could allow that, you know, tax-paying constituents could allow their children to ride the trails without fear of encountering somebody or human refuse. We turned that blind eye, which on retrospect, according to Councilman Brunson, probably wasn't the best idea. And I agree with that. But, um... That blind eye turned into two and a half years. And the, our constituents who live at Apple Run Apartments have been very loud about how their lifestyles, how it affected them negatively. I personally have had phone calls from former, um... board members of Hope Harbor, or, excuse me, of Camp Hope, who resigned within months because of the, the atmosphere there. I, I don't, I don't trust the previous... I, I don't, I don't trust the previous administration of that thing to actually accomplish anything. This new board gives me a little bit of hope, but, um, I don't know if they, um, can do it with, uh, the previous administration still involved. There's, uh, um, the people that are affected by this, you know, empathy, um, I'm, you know, I, it, it's a terrible situation, I, it's a, it's a cultural melee that has affected us here locally. But, you know, listening to all this, what they're trying to accomplish, Hope Harbor exists because Camp Hope lost its 501(c)(3). State has, um...
Camp Hope has, and Hope Harbor's never had a 501(c)(3) approved?
So...
It's still pending through the IRS.
So, let she's, the, the, the legal process, there, there was no legal board for Camp Hope, because the board resigned. And then Hope Harbor came about. But there was no legal dissolution through a board that I'd have been made aware of, that the, the entity running the organization was dissolved, and when there's a new one coming about. And then now we're getting, um, another request for leniency on taxes, and I've learned from the past that leniency on taxes leads to more leniency on taxes. So, y- if we keep, as council, if we keep being lenient, we're gonna have to keep being lenient, and that's something to Councilman Brunson, that we should have enforced this from the beginning. And I appreciate that very much, it was a good point, and, um, so, for me, um, I can't excuse this, because, um, I've been told things for two and a half years, and then I just keep getting another cookie dangled under my nose that it's gonna change. And, um, I don't think the location is the right location. I've, I've, uh, with further understanding of how it impacts the community, and, um, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's a tough thing to say, and it's a tough thing to have to do, but I think it's something that, at least I, I for one will hope to keep the...
Councilman Soha.
Thank you. I would like to, uh, use Dave's word, walk through, uh, the process as well. I think you remember a few years ago, we had a bunch of male models on in the, on the corner of, uh, Holland Broad Street, it took us a while to get rid. We also had a lot of camps on these trails, we had a lot of public outcry about our homeless situation. There's no correction, there's no answer that's gonna solve this problem. The homeless will be with us forever, they've always been here, and they always will be. I think what Camp, Camp Hope is doing is, is excellent work, we've got, we have the public outcry, let's just go with the public outcry. The public outcry what's going on right now is minimal, minimal, compared to what we had on the corner of Holland Bacon, compared to what we had on the trails, it's minimal. Now, I don't wanna repeat that, I don't wanna bring those situations back into our, in our community. I wanna keep our trails safe and clean, our cities downtown safe and clean, and there's no solution, there's no answer, but to kill this, to regenerate, just start right back, we're just chasing our tail, that's all I can say. If you, if you reject this, we're just chasing our tail, and we're gonna have, we're just moving the problem to another place, that's all you're doing.
Councilman Wolford.
Yes, I, I tend to agree, um, with Greg here in that, um, these are, when you look through, I mean, these are providing a service to the city. And so, maybe what we could do is pay them for their service that they're providing to the city, I mean, that's one way to think about it. And so it looks like the $2,800 is a minimal payment to take care of, I forget how many, you know, hundreds of...
Twenty-three thousand?
How much?
Oh, I'm sorry, two-three thousand.
To take care of 3,000 families over the years. It seems like, uh, he, uh, he's right in that, um, there, if, if you go to California, you know, to Beverly Hills, and you'll still find homeless, homeless people there. So it, it is a problem, uh, but it looks like that this, this organization is doing things that solve that problem now. Is there another location that would be better? Um, that might be something that we might, uh, I don't know how we would figure that out, because if they wanted to put it in my neighborhood, then I'd probably go, no, no, I want it there, right, not in my backyard, the, the NIMBY movement, uh, but I do think, uh, that, um, we, we might forgive this $2,800 as a mechanism to say, okay, we're really paying it back for taking care of all these people over this, uh, this time period.
Okay. Councilman Soha.
I tend to agree with that, but we also have to look at, Mayor Potem said a couple of meetings ago, they're still not in compliance with the law. So, do we continue to turn a blind eye to the fact that they're still not in compliance with the law? As Councilman Bentley said, the chances of the zoning board changing the zoning out there to work for them, slim to none, so even after that meeting, they're still not in compliance with the law. A judge has actually said that if you don't do this, you have to pay, they didn't. So now we're being asked to supersede a judge's order. So I guess the question is, you know, does council decide to say, okay, you know, code enforcement, ordinances, Judge Stigerson, thanks for your opinion, but we're gonna do it our way? Or do we, as a council, say, these are our laws, when you come into compliance with them, which they've had two and a half years, to come into compliance with, it's not like it's been two or three months, and oops, we didn't do something right, I can see that, but it's been two and a half years. You know, to come into compliance, they still haven't. How much longer do you go before you finally say, and then when the next one comes, and the next one comes, and the next one comes, not just Camp Hope or Hope Harbor, but somebody else out there that wants to start a business and wants to violate ordinances and codes and judges' orders, do they come in front of us and say, sorry, you know, can you just forgive us? And then we become the council of... You know, I, 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 that's, that's the one question I think we really have to, to wrestle with, is how far do we go before we say enough is enough?
I'll answer that question.
Thank you.
Mr. Paladino said, wow, good, he doesn't like picking winners and losers, that's what we're, that's what we're here for, that's what we're elected for. Now, we don't say yes to everybody who comes in and does this. We've got organizations that've done a fine, good job, and they're doing a good job. Now, the next one who comes in, we can say no, but I, we are elected to pick the winners and the losers, that's what we're here for.
Councilman Wolford.
Well, like I said, if we, if we looked at this as paying them, then maybe they would be able to buy piece of property that would fit within the zoning, or we might wanna decide, well, we're gonna, when we were, you know, designing our zoning laws, we really weren't thinking about homeless situation, I don't, I don't know when the zoning law was, was passed, but I'm guessing that the zoning laws were put into effect prior to the issue of homelessness. And so, uh, perhaps that, that might be the solution, is to, uh, to, to, to think of the $2,800 as a payment to them, uh, and then, uh, to figure out what we're gonna do with the zoning laws, or, but again, like I said, it's gonna be a NIMBY situation, where, you know, wherever this place ends up, uh, un- unless you were to find a place that was perhaps out in the country, you know, where there's not a lot of other people around, uh, maybe that might be a solution to do that.
I guess my question then would be to Mayor Mander Mackey. Where are transitional housing units allowed within the city of Hillsdale?
Sam, do you happen to know that off the top of your head? Planning Department.
Yeah, so I, I think there are two aspects to this, and I don't wanna speak for the, the planning commission itself, but I think one, there's, there's a, there's a bit of a definitional issue when you take something, whether you call it transitional or sober living, or, or some title that doesn't maybe currently fit in, in one of the approved uses, and I, certainly not in B3. Um, B3 is the zoning designation for this, and, um, it is not either a primary use or a special use currently allowed by code for B3.
Sam, could this be rezoned?
So at, at this point in the process, um, what will happen next is if they choose to appeal to the zoning board of appeals, it would be to seek a variance, not to rezone the parcel, but to seek a different use for the parcel that does not conform to what that B3 zoning designation is. Ultimately, with all zoning designations, that is a function of changing ordinance, and that's something that council can do. Um, planning commission can recommend those changes, council can change what they allow or don't allow in any zoning, uh, classification.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey.
Yeah, this is a tough vote. Um, we, we kinda get sidetracked with, think we're gonna resolve the whole situation when we're just talking about a fine, because it seems clear to me that if they're not going away, they're not gonna give up. A- as much as we may wish, they would relocate. But the 60 people crammed into that, into that little building isn't the answer, and they're not gonna approve at that location, so this is gonna be an ongoing struggle, and we should continue to do it civilly. Um, I'm going to vote against the, uh, reducing the fine. Dr. Wolford's argument, uh, kinda tipped me over the edge, I am not about to reward them for their good works when they have violated the law. And the, 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 the three reasons that I came up with are, excuse me, Missy, uh, Missy's, Missy's behavior specifically with Councilman Soha was egregious. Uh, I heard Missy promise at the, at the, uh, planning commission the night before that she would take it down, and she didn't. And then, as the attorney explained, she made a bet, and she lost the bet. So, I wish, I wish them well, I hope we can continue in this tense, I, I mean, I wish we didn't have to, we will be continuing with these tense negotiations, litigations, whatever, uh, but I will be voting to pull the fine.
Council discussion. Councilman Wolford.
Like, like I said, the solution is probably to find property out somewhere in the township or someplace where there's not a lot of people around. And so somehow they can, you know, we can make it so that they can purchase that property, and, uh, then that might, i- i- in, and they would have to then move the, the location of where they're gonna be housing people, and they'd probably have to construct, I don't know, they have to construct a building or something up there. But it seems to me that's the long, the long-term solution to this thing, is to have a homeless shelter that is out where there's not a lot of other people around.
Councilman Morrissey.
Yeah, I believe tonight, though, we have a short-term solution. And in my opinion, we have to evade the law.
I move to deny the request.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion, the floor by Councilman Bailey to supply the request. To not pay the amount of $2,803,4 supported by Councilman Soha. We have roll call votes.
Roll it. Oh, excuse me, what, what is the motion?
The motion is to them deny, um, that they, um, get waiver to 280.
To deny?
Yeah, deny.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion to deny, and second, or, like, Councilman Bentley's second, by Councilman Soha. Any more council discussion? We have roll call votes, secret press.
Yes, Councilperson Paladino?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Suchill?
No.
Wolford?
No.
Mayor Sessions?
No.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Bronz?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Six-three, that's a one.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we can move into, um, there's, um, Ms. Lance reports, there's no proclamation, none, appointments, uh, finance commission, Captain, she's here in the audience, would you come to the podium? Do you have any questions for Captain? Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, I've been a resident of the city of Hillsdale for 25 years. Four children, raised two, two are adults, two are still in school. I live, work, worship here, um, I love this city, I just wanna serve.
Questions, Councilman Soha?
Just an odd one. Um, under occupation, you have listed director of disputes.
Yes.
Who's disputing what, I mean, where are you directing them?
Um, so I work for, I work from my home, um, fully remote position for a Canadian located, based in Tampa, Florida, um, I'm their director of disputes, so all fraud disputes, um, debit card, ACH, uh, error corrections, online banking transfers, UNEAT.
Totally, so it's not a family thing, then?
No. Not directing those disputes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Bailey.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to pitch on the spot, but that was also the finance committee earlier today, that I, I thought of that incident, with the...
Yes, I know what you mean.
The Meyer thing, the, what, what happened with that?
Well, I really think, um, Mr. Soha solved that, um, he was able to reach out to somebody at Meyer prior to them connecting with me, um, the person who was door knocking wouldn't answer questions, so I called Meyer. Um, turns out it was legitimate, um... But, um, Mr. Soha may have more information, I really didn't get along discussion with Meyer, um...
They were doing a promotional thing filming a, a Christmas, uh, commercial, and we're knocking outdoors indiscriminately in Hillsdale, and, um, some friends of mine invited them into their house, actually, and that's how I threw that.
But I...
You reached out to them?
I do believe I responded to your email on that.
Yes, it might just be my memory, I, it's, it's something I did too, and, uh, I believe the mayor was involved in it too, he was the one that brought it to the discussion.
Yeah, he provided the...
But it's kinda incredible, I mean, I admire your intuition, I, I'm surprised it was real, it's, it was crazy.
I was surprised as well.
I do believe, uh, Councilman Bentley, they were doing that back in the summertime as well, because they are around my neighborhood back, uh, June, July, doing the same thing, and police were contacted and all that, and it, and it was weird, but it was legit.
I were, uh, my house was available, surprise?
Okay, any more questions? Questions or anything? Thank you, Kathy.
Yes, thank you, thanks.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept that? All right, motion by Councilman, the Morrissey's for, the Councilman Soha, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, thank you. Okay, next appointment is zoning board of appeals, John Cast. John is not here. He wasn't invited to come, so... Does anybody have any questions or anything about John Cast? Okay, so I have a motion then to appoint John Cast to the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Flynn, supported by Councilman Morrissey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have cemetery board, Ronald Spence.
You know, family's been here in this county probably mid-eighteen, eighteen hundreds. California-born, military brat, just like this other guy back here is, who's older than me. My mother was born in Campero. And she's gone now, unfortunately. There's, you look at the Hillsdale County, that hundred and fifty years of Hillsdale County, you see the name Pease. There's a cemetery over in North Adams, East of North Adams, Pease Cemetery. So we've been here a long time. When I retired from state employment, I decided to get involved in a few things, genealogy work, whatever. I dressed a couple cousins that conned me, you might want to say. I'm now at the Mitchell Research Center as much as I can. I've been cleaning cemetery stones for many families, my family and a few friends, under what I've guidance that I have managed to gather. And upkeep of cemeteries is where we'll all eventually end up. I don't think anybody else has that choice. So, you know, Richard Smith resigned from the board due to his personal preference. I'd made him aware of it before I found out he sold his house. And I thought about it and then when the city sent out that letter for different positions, I went, what the heck? Carried it up there and gave it to this lady over here with a desk. Now email from her today, believe it or not, with all my work that's done, my honor due, my other side job at Mitchell, I managed to make it here tonight.
Councilman Bentley?
Thank you for volunteering for the cemetery board, I think that's great and I move to approve.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman. Yeah, motion by Councilman Bentley, supported by Councilman Soha. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I interrupt for just a point of order? The mailer you referred to, can you use that today? The mailer you referred to, the boards?
I believe that was the city newsletter, correct?
No.
I believe assessing has been working on updating. I think they've been working on updating that too, when we've been, all that.
I had one of those letters. I was very touched. That they were considered.
With all of our vacant C M boards, LAC, cemeteries, et cetera, assessing did send those out to try and draw interest out of the boards.
Do you know, Jason, who they all went out to? I just...
I know Board Three got a lot of them, that's the only one I know for sure because Frank got quite a lot over there. But I don't know, Mr. He had gotten one. Correct, which is Board Three as well. I'm wondering if they went to, and I don't owe me this, if where the person got off, that's where the letter went to, to bring that down, that word.
Councilman Bentley, I'll find out specifically and report that to the council at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I have the past appointment, which is Tiffa Board, Rachel Doty. Tiffa appointment of Rachel Doty. David Hamilton's term on Tiffa Board has expired. And I'm asking council to approve Rachel Doty to fill her position. Rachel's worked for County National Bank, which is the largest business in Tiffa district. Rachel has a strong background in finance along with many years of service, community service, including her involvement with Hillsdale Rotary. I believe that she would be a great addition to Tiffa. Mr. Hamilton currently serves on the Airport Advisory Committee and I believe he will continue to do a good job there. Rather than reappoint Mr. Hamilton to the second board and have him serve on two boards at the same time, I thought it was a good opportunity for someone new to get involved. We have a lot of talented community members who want to serve on the boards and I want us to benefit from having the most volunteers possible, so. Councilman Bentley?
So, Mr. Hamilton was eligible and you chose not to reappoint him?
That's correct.
I see.
Councilman Flynn?
I agree with others who have mentioned this. I would honestly like to see somebody in one of the residential houses, not a renter, an actual property owner that lives in the Tiffa district and beyond Tiffa. With that said though, you, you know, Rachel will do an excellent job. I mean, Rachel's been in the financial business and she's been with County National for a few years. She's been in the financial business for well over thirty years. Her husband's on the police department. She has been in front of council several times for RFPs and other projects that she's been involved in. She volunteers with a bunch of other groups, including the Salvation Army. She knows this town inside and out and I think she will be a great asset to the Tiffa board. She's honestly not one of your yes men. She will say, if she thinks something is not right, if something's stupid, if something's not going to benefit the greater good and go against the greater she needs to. I think Rachel will be an outstanding member of Tiffa.
Thank you.
I want to add as well, as a member of Tiffa, she'd be a great asset. And I mean, anybody who knows Rachel, she's just in it, she's all over the place, so she's an excellent pick. But I also want to agree with what Bob said. I think your next election should be a resident homeowner. I think it'd be a great add to Tiffa, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Mayor Pro Tiffa Paladino?
Thank you, Mayor Sessions. Does she own a business in the Tiffa district?
No.
She, she's an employee?
That's correct.
Okay, I see.
My National Bank.
Yeah, I didn't know about the Hamilton situation. Did you ask him if he would prefer to resign from the Airport Advisory Committee?
I did not.
You did not. Yeah, I think, what did I want to say? Oh, I wanted to answer Jack's question, which you just answered. Yeah, a homeowner would be ideal. I guess you could have, someone who owns, like a landlord, who owns apartments maybe, but ideally someone who lives there, represent residential interests. But yeah, I think I am going to draw the line at owning a property, excuse me, owning a property in the district. Though that might disappoint Jack because now I'm voting against someone from Hillsdale College who looks exceptionally qualified.
Okay, all right. More council discussion? Councilman Bentley?
Yes, with all due respect and to her, who I don't know, but she's clearly qualified, president of the bank. But she lives in Osseo and loyalty to Mr. Hamilton, I don't like the precedent of not re-inviting people back. So I'll be voting no.
I would make a motion then that we appoint Rachel Doty to the Tiffa.
Second, okay. A motion by Councilman Flynn, supported by Councilman Stuccio. I may have roll call votes, see, clerk?
Yes, Councilperson Soha.
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
No.
Bronze?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Paladino?
No.
Six yes, three no.
All right, thank you. All right, now I have a reappointment of zoning boards of appeals with Amber Yoder. This is a reappointment, so if there are any council discussion?
Make a motion that we reappoint Amber Yoder to the zoning board of appeals.
I have a motion by Councilman Flynn, supported by Councilman Soha, to reappoint zoning board of appeals, Amber Yoder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go on to general public comment. Please limit yourself to three minutes and please state your name and your address.
Howard Spence, Apple Run, big brother to Mr. California there. I was born in Oklahoma, so just want to thank you for following the law with your vote tonight. The statements are made that it's going to continue and that's a hundred percent. I believe that's going to continue on, no matter what, they just don't seem to want to follow instructions. But you did the right thing and I want to thank you.
City for Apple Run, thank you, thank you so much.
Nice to see that you guys all figured out that you can have your public meeting for another meeting here. It sounds like you're all pretty much on board with not going along with the state and actually, if I understood correctly, it's a mandate, not a law. And last time Hillsdale filed a mandate, you see how that went? Went pretty well. I don't see why you guys can't do it together instead of all this constant infighting that is going on. Kind of like how you just kicked off a business owner of Tiffa. He owns a business, he's in the Tiffa district, he's on Tiffa. Instead, you appoint somebody who doesn't own a business, doesn't live in Hillsdale, but is the president of the bank. Like, this is the kind of stuff that people in Hillsdale don't like and I don't understand why you keep doing it, but you do, so weird.
Good evening, my name is Felicia. I'm a downtown Hillsdale business owner. Several of you, I know several, I'm not sure, have ever stepped foot in my establishment. I am not a resident of the city of Hillsdale, so I have no voting rights, but am greatly affected by what you all do and decide. I have much to say, but we'll start with a small chunk and stay within my limited three minutes. City council definition, it serves as a legislative body for municipality composed of elected officials. This body makes decisions on behalf of the community, setting policies and managing the city's budget. Its role is to represent the interests of its citizens and establish the legal framework of local governance. So let's not forget your ward and the citizens you represent and keep your personal judgments of others out of this. Watching and hearing the last city council meeting, I'm appalled, but not surprised, at the latter part of the meeting and call all of you to do better. Economic development in this city barely exists. What is a city doing for its citizens in this community? Look around at all the other towns so well decorated where all businesses and cities participate in events, decorating, et cetera. The size of this town should have so many more happenings. It's not just about housing, it's about keeping people in our community, attending the events in our community, shopping in our community and investing in our community. A recent example, but one of many, the Cameron Christmas train and block party. There was no city advertising until the day before. There was no street closure for children's safety. There was no, there was simply no block party. We had a free event dropped at our feet and the city did nothing. Oh, except Sam gave me mini candy canes for me to pass out. I had a free kid craft, free hot chocolate and decorated my space and building, but that is it. Santa and his elves were here handing out gifts. Santa should have had a nice place to greet children, not just standing there. If I had known nothing else was going to be done, I could have helped to make it better. Emails go unanswered for lengthy times. I realize the city is short-staffed, but that is not the community's fault. And what are you doing about it? The Indiana Rail Experience Fort Wayne Railroad Historical Society brought, I believe, twelve trains to Hillsdale this year, alone, and want to do more. But what are we doing? On October seventeenth through the nineteenth, they had estimated twelve hundred passengers between the three days. That's economic development if I've ever seen it. They have a great vision for the future here in Hillsdale, working with myself and especially Luke Robson to make it great. But where is the city involvement? And involvement on your end should be huge, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'll talk forever. Thank you guys for your decision-making, there's a lot that you guys did and I think you, I guess, compliment what you want to call the Hillsdale County city for what you did and how you guys did what you did. I guess the other is Mr. Mackey. You know, expressly about the new costs between the big and small, say residential and factory. Before this committee, could you, possibly before the next meeting is what I'm referring to, can you get out something to the people online, something that'd be small but, you know, enough to give information of what's going to happen? Because I don't think a lot of them know about this. That may be more effective by getting them in here and taking a little bit more interest in the council, whatever they're doing. I guess, under the, other thing, I was looking at the MPSC that I wanted to look at and I'm kind of looking at some of the regulations that they've given or encountered for rural as well as what consumers and, since I've looked at consumers' energy, the problem we're facing out here is deer. They're saying we have so much deer now than ever. Well, they've taken up so much space with these solar panels and they're all fenced in. We took a look at from ninety-four and the corridors coming down and to see how effective that, you know, even though we have consumers' energy doing nothing, but I'm going to say penalizing the people because there's no more agriculture for another twenty years, most of them have adopted. Are we going to change, you know, how you're wanting to have by MPSC? And can they ultimately, you know, change their statute towards what we're having to do for housing with the monies in which, you know, we have to pay accountably for electricity? But anyway, I thank you very much for your time.
James. Excellent. Jack McLean, fourteen forty-five, Southbound. The Tiffa board, I understand what they do and I think it's great, but they're, the people on the Tiffa board don't tend to vote equally amongst the areas in the Tiffa board. It's like, it's like Berry Street and the businesses on Berry Street. There's no recognition there. I mean, Tiffa doesn't care, oh, we got a beautiful little thing here at the Point, which we have every year, it doesn't matter what time of year it is. But how about the stuff on the other end of the Tiffa district? They get nothing, absolutely nothing. I will say this, and I harped and harped about it. They did put out planners in the areas down, not to Berry Street, they went to Waldron Street, but they didn't go to Berry, which I don't know why. The big planners, they can be moved, oh, we don't have a forklift. Well, I know a person that has a forklift that would have given it to them to move those planners, but they never asked. I would have even drove for them. I mean, and it's in the Tiffa district. But oh no, we're not going to ask about that. I think the, if you're going to pick some, it shouldn't be a renter on there because they have no, they have no meat in the game at all. I mean, it's like, I go up through town today and where isn't a snowplow? Right in front of the insurance company. No parking, it's a law or whatever you want to call it. But of course, we don't have to enforce that because it's the apartment dwellers that aren't moving their vehicles. This afternoon, late this afternoon, like after three o'clock, I see they're plowing Bacon Street on the north side of Bacon Street, that first block there. Why wasn't that clean this morning? I mean, it's been... I mean, it's been, we've had that snow for a while, there's a law against or a rule about that, have to clean your sidewalks, but that didn't happen there until late this afternoon. Uh, rezoning, these two buildings at the end of North Street, or whatever it is, down by the Elks, and I spoke about this before, they got rezoned, they're both condemned and have been condemned for years, and that's not supposed to happen. But the person that applied for it, of course, no big deal, and I, I just, it's not right, it's, it's not, it's not showing the fairness amongst the community. Certain people are, are getting over it, it's just like the county bank has got extra people on the Tiffa Board, the college has people on the Tiffa Board, they're not balanced out, it's not fair to the other people.
Any more public comment? See, I'm close forty, I'm going to the city manager, before the city manager back here.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just a few things to mention here, uh, so the, particularly the upcoming holiday events, the Hillsdale Business Association's Christmas in the City, and Light Up Parade is this coming weekend, uh, the annual Santa's Slay Scavenger Hunt is downtown, downtown Hillsdale on Saturday, December sixth, from ten AM to three PM, food trucks, uh, will begin arriving around ten AM. Carolers, um, will be on the courthouse step from twelve PM till one PM. That Light Up Parade in downtown, um, Hillsdale begins at six fifteen, with the participants lining up at the Midtown Parking Lot, starting at five PM. Businesses interested in participating in the Santa's Slay Scavenger Hunt or event sponsorships should contact the Hillsdale Business Association President, Ken Joswick, um, or, uh, and they can, um, contact him, um, if they call here, we can give them his, their number, or his number, and, uh, or they can stop by Southern Michigan Motors, um, where Ken's the owner. Registration forms and additional information can be obtained by visiting the Hillsdale Business Association's Facebook page. Um, there's also Christmas at the Poorhouse, uh, visit to Will Carlton Poorhouse, transports you back to the mid eighteen hundreds. That's Saturday, December sixth as well, from ten AM to four PM, and then Sunday, December seventh, from one PM to four PM. They'll have baked goods for sale in the general store, along with homemade crafts. Santa will visit, uh, on Saturday between one to three, and Sunday between two to four, and the Barn Museum will be open with displays of items from their collections, and nineteen thirty-two, the Sea Raves fire engine and the DO body. Now, a couple of things related, uh, to city operations, so winter park and snow removal. As a reminder, all, all vehicles must be removed from parked, from being parked on the street after four or more inches of snow has fallen. This is required by city ordinance, and it greatly helps our dedicated public service crews to plow the entire width of our streets. Um, and you have probably seen, there are cars that have never moved, as was mentioned, and they're plowed around, uh, which, which cause issues. So, property owners and occupants are, are also required to shovel in the ice or sidewalks in front of their homes or businesses after snow accumulation, to keep those walks reasonably safe for the public. This is especially important in our downtown, so our residents and visitors can continue to support our local businesses throughout the winter. It's also important to mention that, uh, per the, per the ordinance, they do get, uh, some time to do this, so you might not see it happen like the day after it snows, but that they get more time than twenty-four hours to remove it, um, uh, without there being consequences. So, um, that is one other, one of the things that we discuss, uh, here, uh, among city staff is, okay, do we actually go out and issue tickets for cars that haven't moved and they're supposed to by ordinance? That is, uh, you know, just something that is, we are cognizant of, um, and try to avoid, we try to educate them to move them, um, but this, depending on staff, uh, availability. And then the last thing is, we, uh, we are looking for police officer or police officer recruit job openings, so we do have, um, some openings there. Hillsdale Police Department is looking for a qualified applicant, uh, for the position of police officer. The position does not require applicants to be certified, police officers as successful candidates, um, can and, um, could be sent to the police academy by the city. So we do, um, you know, if we find the right candidates, we sponsor them, uh, at the academy. Prior education, law enforcement, criminal justice is preferred, however not required. Applicants will be required to pass, um, physical agility and written writing skills comprehension tests administered by MCOS prior to hiring, and then applicants must be resident of Michigan and possess a valid driver's license, and you do both with extensive background, um, for this. So, with that, we are looking for candidates to either sponsor or hire, um, in regards to the, the police department, so. With that, um, if there are any questions by council, we have the data.
Councilman Bentley? Uh, yes, I have a couple, uh, but continuing with the policeman talk, how was the Public Safety Committee, what, how was the job looking, and how did the meeting go?
So, the Public Safety Committee and Mayor, um, recommended, uh, they're going, they would like to try to find a, uh, public safety director, which would handle both the police and fire positions again, is their initial, um, direction? And if that can, can be found, then we'll, then we'll, we'll look at potentially splitting those positions up. So we should, we're, um, staff is looking to prepare a, a job posting for them and have that to the, the committee members by mid, mid week or so.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mackey, for that. Just to add to that also, so, um, somebody that fills that position of both police and fire is required by the state, have certifications on both sides, um, the fire certification, which is much more difficult to obtain, and police, um, certifications for the, whatever they are, and, um, we weren't fulfilling that with Chief Admiral Corrigan.
They started it after Chief Admiral, or?
Right, so he was ready to sponsor you.
On the fire side.
Right, so there, there's, there's some new stipulations there, we have two qualified applicants, the mayor has, um, asked Public Safety to look into it, and then he's got ideas that he's, uh, engaging us in, and I really appreciate that, and we had a great meeting last week, and you'll have the notes in January, January, or at the next meeting, you'll have to do. And, um, just wanted you to know that we're looking at that, and we have two applications in, uh, with men that might fill those qualifications, we're, but we don't know yet, so, but we just thought budgetary-wise, uh, with what the chief was earning, and it was comparable to what other communities are paying, and it would keep our, it would save us tens of thousands of dollars here if we maintain the, the dual role, so.
And that person would be appointed as police chief and as fire chief, so they'd be doing that, both those, so, it'd be one person doing both those positions, so, that's how the appointment would go. Um, Mayor, broke time, pal, you know?
Thank you. Uh, was there any discussion about asking one of our current full-time firefighters to take on the role?
There's two applications in, yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I would at least, I suppose, like to make the offer that there be a separate fire chief under the, uh, unfortunate condition that it come with no pay raise or a very small pay raise. Um, but if someone's willing to do it, it seems like, uh, we should, we should offer them that opportunity. You, you thought about this already?
The, the, those exact points were brought up at our meeting, actually about pay raises for both police and fire, and the dual role with the fire person maybe heading it up and getting the certifications, where it's all in discussion.
Okay, yeah, I, I still think having a fire person that just does that might be the best way to keep those, uh, interests, uh, clearly and accurately represented. I did wanna make one comment, Councilman Bentley told me that, uh, he was told not to attend that meeting, and I just, I, I find it hard to believe that you lose rights under the Open Meetings Act when you're elected to council, especially as those meetings, I don't think they're often filmed, so, I don't know that a council member can be excluded from a committee, obviously they have to be a citizen, they have to be a participant, maybe you could even say it's good practice, they don't comment during the public comment period or something like that, but it does seem to me that they should be able to sit in a room and listen, without, uh, a quorum being a problem, otherwise you're denying them the very rights they're guaranteed under the Open Meetings Act.
Well, that, when I was first mayor, um, that came up as a problem, okay, and so that's, I've gone after it ever since, that you can only have four people on council hall, this?
There's case law to the effect that if you have a quorum there and they say anything in the course of that meeting, that that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act, if it hasn't been noticed as a meeting of, in your case, the city council. So that's typically why they, we ask that if you're gonna have a committee meeting, you not have a quorum of the council at the meeting, just to make sure you don't accidentally step into a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Or, in the alternative, if you want to allow all of the people to come, like, if you were gonna have, particularly if you're gonna have a council, or, excuse me, a committee of the whole, you would notice that up as an actual meeting of the council, and then you don't have to worry about it, right?
Yeah, I just think, just, council members, don't make public comment, if you go to a committee meeting, just sit there.
Yeah, you, you can't say a word, I mean, you can't participate in it at all, otherwise it becomes you having, in effect, deliberated toward decision, right? So that's typically why the advice is, if you're not there, and there's not a quorum, you don't have to worry about it, if you don't get into that, because sometimes it's hard for people not to say anything, right, so.
It's not hard for me. What about noticing everything is a council meeting then?
You could choose to do that, you have some requirements to attend council meetings that come into play, um, each of you is supposed to attend all of the council meetings, and so if you do that, it becomes not a committee meeting anymore, it's a meeting in the council, right, which sort of defeats the purpose of the, the committee meeting. But you could choose to do that if you wanted.
Okay, uh, but I, I guess I would also mention that it wasn't, it wasn't noticed at all, that I know, it wasn't, it's not on the website, and there's no minutes, and there was no packet or agenda, so, I don't know, I just knew, because I was here, there was a meeting, so I.
It was posted on, on the website.
The, the, the meeting, but no packet, no agenda, and no minutes, so, so anyway. I, I just looked at it, the, the meeting itself is public safety, but no agenda, no packet, no minutes, that's all. It's fine, I, I left, and I was sense to leave, um, I got sidetracked, where were we?
Just going to see, uh, the city manager.
Oh, I do, I have another question for him. Um, can you give us an update on the FDOT and the road die and the tap grant?
I have heard nothing new on that, Jason, have you heard anything from them in regards to the, the, uh, actual grant?
I have never heard nothing today, last correspondence I had was, would know something by the end of November, so I'll follow up with them next week and see whether we can get it, get it ran.
Thank you, please let me go.
Excellent.
Alright, let's go into council comments, council comments. Councilman Solpa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just when, when we've had a motion and a second, I would really appreciate to go into any more council discussion.
Go back in, council discussion?
Yeah, further discussion and then the vote, if that's a kind of practice previously, then I appreciate that.
Okay. I, I will do that, I, I will, uh, Councilman Flynn?
Just two quick things, uh, one, uh, just for the public record, uh, Rachel Doughty is not the president of the County National Bank. Um, she works there, she's, uh, one of the higher-ups, she is not the president. And, uh, secondly, uh, to Felicia's point, I agree with her a thousand percent, uh, coming from a marketing background, um, we could do a lot better, uh, not just the city of Hillsdale, not just people in this building, but everybody up and down these streets could do a lot better promoting our town. Um, as she mentioned, thousands of people are coming in on those trains, uh, next year, not just the trains, but people that come in to UC and the beach, to go to the college, to whatever, and, uh, when we're having an event or things are going on, we should really promote ourselves and, and show off Hillsdale. And, uh, as, as the committee chair of the Community Development Committee, I'd like to mention that I, one of my goals next year is to really maybe have a few more meetings and, and try to come up with some ways dealing with Sam, dealing with Felicia and other business owners, that they even say, okay, look, here's what's on the calendar for twenty twenty-six event-wise, what can we do to help promote it, what can we do to help get the word out, and, and actually bring people in here and, and, and drive our economy in a positive way?
Thank you. You want to come?
Uh, real quick, couple, uh, one, one's a question for city manager, uh, the Christmas decorations that are going on, who, who, what funds that come out of?
Um, so, the BPU, actually, that's one of their benefits, they've always provided to the city, putting them up, um, they were purchased long before me, um, but that was always a donation by the, the BPU staff to install them, and, and in some cases, they installed like the banners for the college or Parents Weekend, college pays us for that, but in this case, um, with the lights and the ornaments and stuff, that, that's the donation they provide to the city.
Um, I don't know why this came up in my mind, but I'd like to suggest again that, uh, I guess ONG, I guess this is the third time I've suggested go to committee, uh, find an alternative for Juneteenth, I would like to not celebrate another Juneteenth in Hillsdale.
Council discussion? I think, one, um, there's the, a border review, there's three appointments, one regular member and two alternatives, two alternates, so, yes.
Then I have a, make a motion, we adjourn?
Second?
Alright, I got a motion by Councilman Flynn, second by Councilman Stuccio, um, all favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, may be adjourned.